Thanks very much. Good evening, everyone. Just gonna call the meeting to order, it is just past six. Now I'll call the public hearing of December 12th, 2019 to order. Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr. Councillor De Genova. Councillor Frye. Councillor Swanson. Councillor Hardwick. Councillor Weave. Councillor Boyle. Councillor Dominado is not in the chamber. Councillor Blythe. Councillor Kirby Young is not in the chamber. The meeting has quorum.
Thank you. First, before we begin, we'd like to acknowledge, as always, that we're on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh people, and thank them for having cared for these lands since time immemorial. And also, I think council will agree that getting to know the chief and councils better has been a real highlight of our time here as we move forward planning this great city together. Also wanted to thank the staff, many lots here today, this evening, that done so much work to really make this one of the best places in the world to live, work, and play. So thanks very much for everything that you do here, too. I'd like to, before we begin the proceedings, I'd like to remind those attending council today regarding conduct in the public gallery. I'd ask you to please refrain from addressing council members without permission, or plotting or otherwise interrupting a council member or a speaker addressing council. Please also respect the directions of the chair so that we can create a respectful environment for council, the public, and staff present at today's meetings. And I'll try to enforce this gently as we move along, just so we can keep the discussion focused on the projects we're considering this evening. Before we begin, just want to remind you that speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments and the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter @VanCityClerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. I'll try to, as we go through, read out the name and number, just to help folks, as a lot of speakers registered for this evening. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca. And if you have spoken and you still have things to say, you can always send them to us on publichearing@vancouver.ca. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have up to eight minutes to speak, and only if each person or group representative is present and identified at the public hearing, and not a speaker themselves. Finally, if council does not conclude, hearing from all speakers this evening will recess and reconvene the meeting on Tuesday, December 17th, at 6:00 PM here in council chamber. And if we don't finish speakers today, we'll reconvene Tuesday, December 17th, at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. A reminder that council's role at this public hearing is a quasi-judicial body, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from speakers, council may approve, in principle, the application or may alter it to give effect to the representations made at the public hearing, refuse the application, or defer the application for further consideration. Before we begin, I'd also like to remind council that we need to move the recommendation for item one together with the yellow memorandum dated December 11th, 2019, entitled CD1 rezoning 2543 to 2583 Renfrew Street and 2895 East 10th Avenue Eligible Tenancy under the Tenant Relocation and Protection Policy. So with that, I'll ask the clerk to read out the first consideration.
This is an application by Wensley Architecture Limited to rezone 2543 to 2583 Renfrew Street and 2895 East 10th Avenue from RS1 One Family Dwelling District and C1 Commercial District to CD1 District to permit the development of a seven-story mixed-use building containing commercial uses at grade and 96 secured rental residential units, with 20% of the residential floor area being secured as moderate-income units. A building height of 26.2 meters, or 86 feet, and a floor-space ratio of 3.60 are proposed. The following correspondence was received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list and receipt of public comments. Four pieces of correspondence, along with one petition with 12 signatures, in support of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thanks very much. So we have Derek Robinson here, from the rezoning centre, to present on items one and two today. You gonna do both at the same time, or... Great. Okay, great. I think we'd all like to see those. So if you want to move ahead, then we can, of course, after the presentations, we'll be asking questions to the applicant and the staff. So please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Derek Robinson, rezoning planner. The following is a combined staff presentation for items one and two on tonight's agenda. Both items have been submitted for rezoning consideration under the Moderate-Income Rental Housing Pilot by the same owner and applicant team. And I'll remind council that a separate vote on each item is required. I'll also note that a yellow memo was included with the agenda package for both of these items, dated December 3rd. The yellow memo corrects staff omissions in the draft CD1 bylaw and reflects the applicant's recent request to apply a DCL waiver to the projects. The posted bylaws and summary and recommendations reflect these changes, and so no action is required of council here tonight on these memos. A separate second yellow memo dated December 11th was circulated for item one only, related to an existing tenant now eligible for compensation. This memo requires action on the floor should council see fit to approve the project and include these recommended TRP conditions. The two sites are located along Renfrew Street, on the north and south sides of East 10th Avenue, respectively. For clarity, item one is referred to as the North Building, while item two is referred to as the South Building, shown with yellow boxes on this slide. The sites are currently developed with 11 single-family houses, one of which has been converted to a commercial business permitted under existing zoning. The sites are located in Renfrew-Collingwood, where the median neighbourhood household income is approximately $64,000. Renfrew Skytrain Station is located approximately 200 metres to the south. And nearby amenities, within a five-to-eight-minute walk, include the Skytrain Station and Central Valley Greenway, VanTech Secondary, Caslow Park, Group Childcares, as well as mixed employment areas and auto-oriented services. The subject sites consist of six lots and five lots, respectively, all of which are owned RS1, except for the northernmost lot, which is owned C1 Commercial, all shown on this slide with red boxes. The existing zoning would allow development of 10 duplex houses, including a secondary suite along with each strata unit, for a total of up to 40 units combined on both sites, as well as a small commercial building on the lone lot, Zone C1. Properties to the north of the site were rezoned CD1 in 2017 to allow for a mixed-use four-story secured rental building. To the east, across Renfrew Street, is the Broadway Tech Centre Employment Area, which is currently developed with four-to-six-story office buildings, with a maximum height permitted up to 100 feet under the existing zoning. To the south is La Salle College, rezoned in 2010 to permit employment uses up to a height of 90 feet along the shared property line. However, the present building is approximately two stories. After extensive public consultation, council approved the Housing Vancouver Strategy in November 2017, including the Moderate-Income Rental Housing Pilot Programme. The strategy seeks to shift the supply of development of new homes towards the right supply, with targets for new units along a continuum of housing types, including 20,000 new secured rental units, of which 4,000 are to be below-market targeted for moderate incomes. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site under the Moderate-Income Rental Housing Pilot Programme, referred to as the MERP programme. The three items on the agenda tonight are the first projects to come forward to public hearing under this pilot. Up to 20 proposals are being considered, selected based on a number of criteria, including affordability, number of new rental units created, impact on existing renters, proximity to transient amenities, and neighbourhood fit. The policy allows consideration of heights up to six stories for RS1-zone sites located on arterials. The policy also makes provision to consider additional heightened density for sites located at arterial intersections. A minimum of 20% of the residential floor area is permanently secured at rents affordable to moderate-income households, earning $30,000 to $80,000 per year. There are to be caps on rental increases set under the Provincial Residential Tenancy Act, even on a change in tenant, so-called vacancy control. As part of the MERP programme, each applicant is required to include a financial statement for city review to assess the value of the project and determine if additional land lift is being created through the pilot zoning incentives. This information will help inform staff's report back on the pilot programme later next year. Staff and real estate services have conducted a financial review and determined the value of the additional density and incentives recommended here is offset by the cost of securing the moderate-income units, and no additional land lift is being generated. The original application for the North Building proposes a six-story mixed-use building with 87 secured rental units. As a direct result of public feedback and urban design panel review, staff were recommending a modest increase in heightened density, as illustrated in green on this image. Recommendations outlined in the staff report are for a full seven-story building with a partial eighth floor to be used only as common amenity space. Recommended FSR is 3.60. These recommendations result in a total of 96 rental units, which is an increase of nine rental units, including approximately 19 units secured at moderate-income rates. I'll also note the posted drawings, as well as the model, depict the original proposal, rather than the staff recommendations. The original application for the South Building also proposes a six-story mixed-use building with 70 secured rental units. Similar to the North Building, staff recommend a full seven-story building with a partial eighth floor for common amenity space, again with additional building mass shown here in green. The recommended FSR for the South Building is 3.54. These recommendations result in a total of 82 rental units, an increase of 12 rental units, including approximately 18 units secured at moderate-income rates. This slide outlines maximum rents for the moderate-income units. The two applications combined propose approximately 37 moderate-income units at rates shown here between $950 to $2,000 per month. Shown in the column on the right are sample occupations to which these units may be affordable. For example, a health services assistant in a studio unit, or a two-income household comprised of a transit driver and an administrative assistant in a two-bedroom unit. Changes to the DCL bylaw were approved by council on November 26th, allowing projects that secure a minimum 20% of floor area at moderate-income rates to qualify for a DCL waiver, while still setting rents for the market portion of the project according to market conditions. As such, the remainder of the project rental rates are not known at this time and will be set at occupancy according to the market. Average rents for newer buildings on the east side are shown here in blue for comparison. The staff report indicates that DCLs will be paid on the residential portion of these projects. However, given this recent council direction to amend the DCL bylaw, the applicant has now requested a waiver of DCLs, as noted in the yellow memo included in your agenda packages. Staff do recognise that while not all units proposed in the project will be affordable to all Vancouver residents, the DCL waiver does help to enable development of much-needed new secured rental housing, as directed in the Housing Vancouver Strategy, while also, in this case, affording the city the opportunity to test delivery of secured vacancy-controlled below-market units provided through the private for-profit development industry. Furthermore, these moderate-income rental rates and the market rates will ultimately be well below the monthly cost of ownership. Based on CMHC data, ownership of a median-priced unit on the east side ranges from over $200 a month for a studio, up to nearly $6,000 for a three-bedroom. If approved, all units would be secured through a housing agreement, both prohibiting the stratification of units, while also limiting the rates at which rents for the moderate-income units may be increased, even on a change in tenant. Eight of the 11 existing dwellings currently house residential tenants. Of these tenants, two are previous owners who remain on site. According to the applicant team, all tenants were advised of the intent to redevelop prior to signing a lease. All tenancies have protection under the Residential Tenancy Act. One current tenant meets the eligibility criteria set out in the updated Tenant Relocation and Protection Policy, approved in June of this year for secondary rental, as it is the only non-previous-owner tenancy, at least two years old on the date of the rezoning application. Staff note again, a second separate yellow memo that has been distributed for the North Building for item one only, dated December 11th, which is related to this one eligible tenant. Incorrect information was provided with the original application submission, indicating the tenancy in question began on May 1st, 2017. Supplementary information provided by the applicant at a later date confirmed that this tenancy actually began on April 1st, 2017. Given that the date of submission for the rezoning application was April 9th, 2019, the above-noted tenancy is therefore eligible for compensation under the TRP policy. And so if council is inclined to support this application as recommended by staff, we would also recommend council include the additional condition of approval outlined in the yellow memo that requires the applicant provide compensation through a tenant relocation plan for the one eligible tenant. Two open houses have been held with the public. An applicant-hosted pre-application open house was held in September 2018, while a city-hosted open house was held on June 15th, 2019. The city-led open house was attended by approximately 49 people. Feedback received throughout the process was largely positive, including support for rental housing and increased height and density at this location. Staff responded to this feedback, as well as the feedback of the urban design panel, by recommending a modest increase in heightened density, as outlined earlier in the presentation. In conclusion, staff support this application, subject to conditions in Appendix B, as it is consistent with the Moderate-Income Rental Housing Pilot Programme and would contribute a combined total of approximately 178 units of new secured rental housing, including an estimated 37 units secured at moderate-income rates, all towards achieving the city's housing goals as identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Staff are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Let's see, so just to let you know, council, we have one, two, three, four folks signed up to speak for rezoning application one, and two folks signed up for rezoning application two. So I do see a couple of folks on the list for questions, so maybe we can have one round of questions before we get to the speakers. Folks okay with that? Okay, so councillor De Genova?
Oh, yes, questions to staff.
Wait.
No, no, no.
One second here.
Thank you.
First, I forgot to ask, is the applicant team here to speak to the application? Or... Yes, would you like to speak or just answer questions? Answer the questions? Okay. And clerk, could you advise that we do one at a time, I think, right? We should speak to... Is that the idea? Should we have... Go through one at a time? We could have questions on both, but applicant... One at a time. Okay, so for the second application, I'll call on the applicant in a second after we've dealt with this one. So are there any questions we have to either the applicant or to staff? Okay, please go ahead, councillor De Genova.
Thanks very much. I note that you had talked a little bit about vacancy control and how it's being used here. Also noted that you said that some of the units may not be considered affordable to all people in the city of Vancouver. But wondering if we have any information from other staff departments as to if there are a shortage of units in the city of Vancouver in these rental ranges currently? So even if they're not quote-unquote "affordable", that this would lessen the demand, I suppose, that there currently is, that are forcing people out of the city of Vancouver? That's what I'm hearing. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Dan Garrison, Assistant Director of Planning, Housing Policy and Regulation. On the first question about vacancy control for the 20% of the floor area, the units that are secured at the moderate-income rents, while tenancies are in place, the Residential Tenancy Act would apply, which means the increases in rents would be linked to inflation. And under the agreements that the applicant is entering into here, that would continue upon unit turnover as well. So that's how the vacancy control would apply. It would continue to... The rents would continue to increase at the RTA rates. We have had discussions through the consultation that we just did around the rental incentive programs, that there are some financial challenges that UDI has pointed out, the development industry has pointed out to us. So we are doing some analysis and consultation on that. But in the project in front of you today, that is what the agreements that you'd be considering tonight would reflect. In terms of the rental need, I think the studies that we've done recently have demonstrated a very strong demand for rental housing at all parts of the housing continuum and basically all rent levels as the cost of ownership has increased so much and demand for rental continues to be strong, at about 0.8% vacancy rate. So we think while the moderate-income rental housing programme is an excellent way to deliver with the private sector some affordability for lower-income households and moderate-income households, there's also a lot of importance and value in the delivery of the rental units generally.
Okay, but there is a need for these units. Staff expect that these units would be tenanted, they wouldn't be sitting empty as empty rental stock because there isn't a need for units at this price point. That's what I was asking about. You know, supply and demand, I think that's a little bit broad. But from the studies that I know we've been shown by the housing team and receiving housing updates, that's what I understood. But I just wanted to confirm that as we're talking about this application specifically.
Yes, there's virtually no vacancy in our rental housing stock at any income level. At the very top end, the vacancy rate is slightly higher than at the lower end. But we're talking about in the range of 1.2% in the higher income units, so still well below the 3 or so percent we would consider to be a balanced market.
Thanks. I have another question. And the question is on the 2.2% increase that's allowed under the Residential Tenancy Act. Understanding that this is one of the first MERP projects that city council is going to make a decision on, I'm wondering, and I'll ask the applicant the same question, but I'm gonna ask staff, is there any property tax exemption for this? To find a way to meet in the middle with the 2.2% that's prescribed by the province and in the Residential Tenancy Act now? That you can only raise rents by 2.2%? But understanding that right now, we're grappling with a budget that is well above 2.2% and looking at the viability of this. And as you mentioned, UDI, I just had to ask that question. So is the city able to do anything?
Well, we certainly have heard from the development industry concerns about the controls on rent increases and the new way that rents are allowed to increase under the RTA in terms of the financial viability of projects, both new and existing. We do not currently have a programme where the city offers property tax exemptions or relief for rental projects.
So they would have... So the applicant likely would have to build those property tax increases into their pro forma to look at the viability of the project now, at five years out, at 10 years out, and as they look at it through the life of, I suppose, the development or the building?
That's right, that's correct. It would be a factor that they would have to take into account in their both construction and operating pro forma over time. And that would be the impact it would have. It wouldn't necessarily be able to be passed on to tenants through higher rents because of the controls of the Residential Tenancy Act place on allowable rent increases.
Okay.
And we're at the five minutes?
Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Frye.
Yeah, thank you. So also for staff, can we speak to the applicant now, or we're waiting for...
You can ask questions to the applicant.
Okay, sure. So for the applicant and for staff, I guess I'm looking at the yellow memo from December 3rd, and I'm looking at the article in the Georgia Strait, which from November 25th, which describes in glowing terms how the Molnar Group would be affording modest rents in Vancouver, but not asking for a DCL waiver. And then for the memo on the 3rd, since the rental incentive programme was passed by this council, there's now going to be a DCL waiver on this project. I'm wondering what's changed and how this came about? Because presumably, the land was purchased and assembled, the performas were put together. Was this simply a change because we put that opportunity on the table?
Point of order. Just one second, councillor Frye. Councillor De Genova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that we're in a quasi-judicial body and situation, and I'm not sure of the article, but it's not in my correspondence package. the article, but it's not in my correspondence package. No one has spoken to it yet, so I just was wondering if that was something that we were supposed to consider? I mean, if it was a question, but I heard that it was specifically from the Georgia Strait, so I was just concerned.
I think it's, at this point, thanks for raising a point of order, but I think it's okay to ask?
I did reference the yellow memo from December 3rd, which is in your package.
We don't need a debate. We can just move.
I just wanted to make sure we were sticking with.
Yeah, so referencing the yellow memo from December 3rd, which is in our package.
We're not back and forth debating here, thanks. Please perceive it's your question.
Bringing this back online. Yeah, so please.
Yes, thank you, happy to speak to that memo. Yes, so it is essentially a direct result of the changes that were approved by council on November 26th, which was, you know, council directed staff, you know, to look at potential DCL changes, you know, as opportunities to increase affordability in rental projects. This was one of the changes that was brought forward, but, so, you know, council directing staff to essentially change the DCL bylaw is the precipice, as I understand, the applicant, of course, can speak further to that, but is, that's the reason why that was requested later in the process?
Sure, so, but just to be clear then, this would have gone ahead as per the exact same offering without a DCL waiver, up until the moment we passed that bylaw on the 29th?
That's what, that's what the applicant had brought forward, yeah.
Sure, so no change to the affordability or the pro forma or anything other than?
Yeah, simply asking for a waiver based on changes, yeah.
Which is fair, because we've offered it, but I'd be curious to hear from the applicant if they, what the rationale was, if you feel like you'd like to answer that question.
Sorry, and I haven't mentioned this early, but of course applicants can respond or not respond as they're...
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Okay. Oh, sure, I mean, and you certainly don't have to, I'm just curious because it is a pilot of the program, project, and sort of, please.
So, following up what Derek had to say, we obviously were given the opportunity, and thank you council and mayor for passing the recent housing policies that are going to be very beneficial for the future of the city and our rental needs. The pro forma that we were running prior to was very thin, and this was simply going to be a generational asset that was really not-for-profit, to be honest. And so this waiver gave us an opportunity, not only that, but we also changed to non-combustible during the process in the last six months. Originally, this was going to be frame construction, it's going to be concrete on the underground and then ground floor and then frame above. We've now gone to a non-combustible, which is longer lasting, better for renters, better for, a thousand reasons why non-combustible is better. And when we switched to non-combustible, this project was on the thin line of not going forward, and this DCL waiver actually gives us the opportunity to provide this housing to the city of Vancouver.
And I really appreciate that, I certainly don't begrudge you or the Molnar family. So, yeah, no, thank you. That's good for me.
Okay, thanks councillor Frye, councillor Weeb, up to five minutes.
Yeah, it's good to see the wheelchair accessible washroom in the amenity space. I'm just wondering how many of the units in the proposal will follow the guidelines to be universally accessed?
Yeah, thanks for the question, and perhaps the applicant could speak more directly to the number of units that will be, but certainly there are requirements under the Vancouver Building Bylaw that they would have to meet, and so that would essentially be, be the answer. There's no specific condition around it, it's just meeting the building bylaw.
Okay. For the amenity space, is that a building bylaw that would make the amenity rooms wheelchair accessible?
Yes, they'll be accessible.
Second, the cap rate from the change from the proposed to what the recommendation is from staff, what is the cap rate change between the two proposals?
I'm not sure that can be answered right now tonight.
No, but obviously we did a, I guess from that proponent, is, what is the change on the financials from the proposed to the recommended here from staff?
Good evening councillors, Andre Molnar. The answer to the question is, if you can tell me what the drywall prices are and the concrete prices are a year from now, I can answer your question, but we are talking a major, a major question here, because it's a mystery. We don't know our cost exactly to the penny today, because we don't know the cost of the materials we're using. The material changes are tremendous. We predict, if we would build a building today, we would barely survive it. And we have a moral and family commitment to do rental housing, and we're doing this for 50 years in the city, and we really enjoy working with this council, because we can see that you see the light and pass some resolution which will help, or policies which will help the city to produce more rental housing, but we are on very thin ice. So if drywall prices or concrete prices go crazy, it will be basically a nonprofit venture. So it's a very thin line, and this is why you don't have a lineup here. We are the only ones who are doing this, there are very few people who can do it, and basically we're living out of our experience. We know how to build. We are really not developers, we are builders.
And builders. And what do you think about putting the amenity space on the roof? Do you think that's?
Wonderful, I think the people will enjoy it. We have done that on condominiums before, we have done that on Vancouver Island on some housing, rental housing we have done, it is very popular. People can go up, enjoy the view, enjoy the beautiful city. I mean, this is one of the greatest cities on earth, and you should be happy that we can do it, and hopefully people will use it.
No, I like to see that. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, my questions are basically for both buildings. The first one is, do you have a ballpark figure for how much an underground parking spot costs to build?
Approximately $50,000, again, a year from now I can tell you, because the concrete price, I don't know the concrete price a year from now, but today is $50,000 roughly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I get, I'm gathering that you got extra density here, or that the proponent got extra density because it's close to Skytrain, but I see that the proponent is proposing to build more parking spots than are required. So why is that? And wouldn't it help with affordability if there were fewer parking spots, especially since it's right next to transit?
Mr. Mayor, we do a lot of market studies and we watch the market, and as much as I would like to tell you that transit is important, and transit is tremendously important, and I can't wait to see transit continuing on Broadway and so on, the people, my generation for sure, but even generation younger than me, they just want to drive. So we have to have some parking available for the tenants, because we want to be tenant-friendly, and some people need cars. So we figure that there is a balance. I think 10 years from now, you will need less cars, but today I think you still need a few parking stalls.
So another question is, are these buildings going to have basically what I've always called a rich door and a poor door?
A what?
A rich door and a poor door?
God forbid. Oh, no, don't even mention that, no way, no. That would be, I came here as a penniless refugee, when I immigrated to Canada, I was a penniless refugee, so I have full respect for people who don't have the means what I have today, but the bottom line is, I understand. I understand fully. I've been there, done that, and I've been penniless, and that's how I came here. So I understand what tenants have to go through, because I lived through that myself.
Okay, so the other thing I'm seeing is that the studios only have to be, the studios for the low-income units only have to be 320 square feet, whereas the studios for the higher-income units will be bigger? And that for the, the lower-income units don't have to have windows in all the bedrooms, but for the higher-income units, you do?
No, true, no, no, this is, I don't know, but Derek, maybe you can answer that, thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, thanks. The policy does allow consideration for borrowed light bedrooms in certain instances for the third bedroom. That's in there to encourage three-bedroom units, particularly if you have sites that are not on a corner, but there are none proposed here in this proposal as well. And similarly, the policy does make consideration for potentially smaller sort of micro units for the moderate income units only studios, but again, none are proposed here in this application.
So what's the square footage for the studios for the moderate income units?
Sure. Yes, but, so overall, on the studio units, the average is 426 square feet. Again, the applicant has indicated which of these units would be moderate income, but, you know, there's a potential through the permitting process for, for some revision to that, right? The, it's the floor area that's being dedicated rather than the unit count, but again, so it's 426 square feet for the studio units as proposed overall.
And you're saying that the chief units won't be smaller?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And if we adopt this as-is, will we be agreeing to waive the DCLs?
Yes, that's what's, that's what's being proposed, yes, and so the yellow memo is outlining that.
Yep, thank you.
Great, thanks councillor Carr, up to five minutes.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. I note that in the Appendix D, which reports on the urban design panel commentary on this project, that it's the urban design panel that asked staff to consider a seventh floor for this project and a partial eighth floor. I'm just wondering if the ultimate addition of that seventh floor and the partial eighth for rooftop amenity actually did come from the urban design panel? If that's your perception of that process?
Right, so it would have been both from, directly from the public feedback we heard, as well as from the urban design panel recommendation, and then as well the staff review.
Okay.
All three of those.
Yeah, the urban design panel asked you to review that, and I do note that the public commentary included that as well, go higher and denser because of the Skytrain. Okay.
So we heard it from both, and so that's why staff's here with.
Great. I have a question to the applicant, based on that. I noticed that you said in answer to an earlier question, that the building was originally a wood frame, and now there's an increased cost because you had to go with concrete. Did you have to switch from wood frame to concrete because of the additional seventh floor and eighth and partial eighths?
Good evening. My name is Dave McGrath, I'm the architect from WA. BC Building Code or Vancouver Building Code, once we go over six stories as definition, it has to be of non-combustible construction, hence we have to go to concrete.
Yeah, great, okay, that's, that explains the increase in cost. My third question has to do with the public, actually, I think it might have been answered, it's the oversupply of parking, and I noticed that the public had talked about that supply of parking. Perhaps you can just explain to me why, you did partially explain that young people like to, like to drive, or there's a certain number that do. Is it possible at this point to cut back on those number of parking spaces, or have you made that definite commitment into the project?
Certainly the applicant could speak to their, their future desire, but I'll just mention from a staff perspective, that the applicant is proposing approximately 16 more parking stalls than is required by the bylaw with these two projects combined. And throughout the rezoning process, staff did encourage the applicant to consider the option to provide a transportation demand management plan and take advantage of further parking reductions. And I just want to note that that does remain an option to all applicants to consider as they go through the development permit process, so, so from a, you know, from a bylaw policy standpoint, it is an option that remains available. The applicant could speak to their intent.
Right, and that's in the conditions of approval, the demand management plan?
It's simply allotted for in the parking bylaw.
Okay, yep.
So another, following on Derek's, this is sort of, we're going to determine what the need of the parking is as we go forward, but there is commercial in the bottom of these buildings, and there's a million square feet of office workers that live across the street, and on any given day, you can drive by and there's food trucks lined up, run through. There's not a lot of service for these people that are working across the street. We're providing, you know, retail at grade, and so we wanted to leave our options open for commercial parking. So some of those extra stalls more than likely would be going to commercial use rather than to tenant use, because we believe most of our tenants are going to use transit. But, you know, if we have a cafe, restaurant, hairdresser, dentist, doctor, chiropractor, service tenants that will feed the need across the street at Broadway Tech and the future need going east down Broadway with the other applications that are coming forward, we just wanted to leave our options open. We do believe ultimately that tenants will need less cars, but with commercial at grade, we have to not limit the accessibility for our commercial tenants to have customers.
Yeah, that explains it for me, thank you. And I have a final question, and it does arise out also the comments that are embedded in this report that come from the public, and some of the comments noted that, or questioned, are these units, or is there an intention, I think particularly the MERP units, that there will be, that these will be for local people, or that they will be tenanted by local people? Maybe somebody can address for me how the teneting process works for these, these units that are at the 30% of people's local, people's income in the moderate income range?
Yeah, so, thanks for the question. So the, the teneting essentially would work in the same way that, that market units would be, would be tenanted, in which the units would be advertised, and then potential households would apply and be selected. The difference would be primarily in the process of needing to test people's incomes, making sure they qualify, and then needing to do that on an ongoing basis to ensure that they still qualify as they remain in the building. So really the difference between the rental of a market rate rental unit and these units is the income testing and verification process.
And who does that? Is that the owner?
We're over the five.
The applicant.
Okay, councillor Domeno?
Owner. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and actually, perfect segue, because I was, had similar questions, so I will follow up with that question, is who does the income testing at the onset and ongoing, because that was one of my questions.
Yeah, so the, the building owner and manager would do the income testing and verification process, but there would be a regular process in place where annually they need to submit reports to the city, where we would evaluate those reports and ensure that they were in compliance with the program. And then there would be a regular auditing process as well, where we would need to check in with them and make sure that they were still in compliance as the building went on over time.
You anticipated my next question, how would we ensure their compliance? Okay, thank you for that. I had another staff question, just really related to the, with the applicant noting that they switched to a non-combustible material based on the city building code. I'm just curious, I thought there was an opportunity, like alternative solutions available to do more than six stories with wood, mass timber, and I'm just wondering if you could clarify that for me, how that works, recognizing that concrete does cost more and...
Yes, I mean, those options are in theory available, and, you know, I would clarify that it was indicated to staff before the, the height was recommended to be increased, that, that they were considering going to non-combustible. So it's really a choice that the owner and applicant is making in that construction method, but certainly, you know, mass timber and these things are options, alternative solutions are options in theory, they could be explored if so desired.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And I'm not sure, this is to staff or the applicant, but I was curious about with respect to the amenity, the rooftop amenity, whether there was consideration to doing something at ground level? I understand that it was recommended it be rooftop, but ground level, was that considered?
Hi, Paul Chang, Senior Development Planner. I think that was considered, but as, as design goes, there are a couple of things that we want to consider. First of all, the ground floor in this case, we'd like to maximize the number, the amount of commercial retail units as much as possible. And the other thinking is that on the roof, that, that is a lot of space that we would like to see used in a more fruitful way. And when I say fruitful, I really mean by, you know, in terms of urban agriculture, that'd be really great. And also being able to have a space that's... being able to have a space that's recommend, that's going to be guaranteeing as much sun access as possible. The roof gets a lot more sun than something at grade right beside a building. And so I think from a design aspect, we think that rooftop amenity space is really something that maximizes the livability for all residents in the building.
Okay, thank you. And then probably one last question, and it's just with respect to the yellow memo, Appendix F. I think it's the second to last page, just looking at the summary of public benefits under the proposed zoning, public art eligible, the 20% social housing is required as part of the program. But do we sort of indicate, like here says not applicable, but do we actually do evaluation of what that is valued at in terms of that moderate income rental housing? I don't see a dollar value ascribed to it. And I'm just curious if we, we just don't do that, or we do know it, but we just don't put it in this memo. So we know sort of, that's sort of a public benefit in my mind, is that we've focused in on that income spectrum. I'm just, I just don't see it here.
Sure, yeah, thanks for the question. Yeah, so what you're seeing in that appendix is basically a sort of standard list that applies to projects. And again, this is something separate from what we're providing here. This is, you know, we're not providing social housing per se. This is referring to if we had a project where it was, say, for example, 80% strata and 20% was turnkey social housing to the city, whereas here we're doing something different, where we're simply securing 20% of the floor area, residential floor area at below market rates.
Do we see that as a public benefit that we would want to add a valuation to?
Yeah, it's not a sort of public benefit as we would define it narrowly in terms of when we're talking about applying CACs and that sort of thing, but it certainly has a public benefit.
Just a quick addition or feedback on that is annually, when you see our annual DCL and CAC reports, we will include things like secured market rental housing and now going forward with the MIRP program, the moderate income rental units. But we include them simply as a unit count and the number of units that were delivered, mainly because if you look at what we report out in those reports, it's largely something that's a concrete dollar amount. Something was built for us, it cost this much to build, and it became a public asset. These are harder to value in that way. So the way we've been reporting out on them is as a public benefit itself.
The units itself.
Just as the number of units themselves, rather than a financial value.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, that's perfect.
Okay, Councilor, we're going to just do one round of questions before we got to the speakers. And of course, we can return to questions for staff and the applicant. But Councilor Kirby Young had not had an opportunity in the first round to see a number of people on, went a second round. So I'll move Councilor Kirby Young, and then we can move to hearing from the public. So I'm just going to, Councilor Kirby Young, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to follow up on a question from Councilor Dominado earlier, and that was really around the process for income testing. And I guess just to push that a little bit further, how does council have confidence in that process? Because I hear varied things about it, in some cases working, in other cases not, not working as intended. So where's kind of the check and balance or the comfort in how that process works?
And I'd say, first of all, the moderate income rental housing pilot program is a pilot program for a reason. This is the first time that we've tried this approach of securing affordability in private rental. So we do know this is a thing that we're continuing to work on and develop. We have learned, most of us in the housing team and our partners in the community have been deeply involved in the income testing process with our partners like BC Housing and partners in the nonprofit sector. So we do have some understanding of how that process works. So we're looking to build out a comprehensive process that frankly puts most of the onus on the applicant, or once it's built, the building owner and manager to actually do that work, but then build up a comprehensive auditing process, which is really a best practice when we're trying to balance, you know, sort of the cost of implementing a program with the assurance that you're looking for in terms of maintaining the purpose of the program over time.
So being a pilot and kind of drilling down into the specifics, what is, how does, is there any guidance or tools or requirements given to the building management to carry that out?
Yeah, absolutely.
And what does a tenant have to provide? So I'm just trying to get down to sort of brass tacks, real terms.
So it is actually, many of the conditions that are in these reports that you're considering today would require annual reporting by the applicant of things like incomes and ensuring that the tenants are still qualifying for...
So if I'm a tenant, I'm providing a tax return, for example?
That's the normal technique of doing it, is income tax data, which is the best measure of income that most nonprofits and other groups that do income testing use. And then there would be a process that would focus on very regularly ensuring that new tenants that are moving into the building meet the requirements, and then a regular process going forward to ensure that tenants that have been in those units over a period of time continue to meet the income requirement.
Okay. And if I'm a, quick follow-up, if I'm a tenant, and I've qualified for one of the moderate income units, and then I've bettered my situation, and I don't anymore, does my rent get adjusted? Do I have to move? Does that mean that's a loss of one net unit in terms of the moderate income allocation? How does that work?
So this is one of the big challenges in income testing across the housing sector. So certainly, if your income goes up, one of the things we've done is the income requirement to get into the building. We've created a bit of a buffer in the structure, so we do actually allow people to improve their lives, improve their incomes, and still maintain a place in the building to a point. If you then exceed that threshold, there could be one of two options. You could move into a different unit and have your rent go to market, or you could move out, look for additional accommodation. But we would not be seeing a loss in the moderate income rental units and floor space in the building. That would need to be maintained. We have built in a buffer to say that the unit where, if that occurs and the income of the tenant increases beyond the threshold, that the length of time to figure out a solution to that is not like a one or two-month period, it's at least a six-month period.
Okay. But there is a timeline expectation, it's not open-ended?
That's exactly right, yeah.
Okay, that's super helpful. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Councilor, thanks very much. After we hear from speakers, we'll return to the second round of questions to the staff or the applicant. What have you information, Councilor?
Mr. Mayor, can we ask questions of the applicant after?
Yes.
Speakers, so we haven't been before. I just understood it to be two separate rounds. One was for staff, one was for the applicant. So my apologies.
I asked the applicant was here, and they said...
Okay, so I can ask of the applicant after?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
So we'll just hear from...
Okay.
Okay, thanks. So we have, our first speaker is Darren Franco. Mr. Franco here? Darren Franco. Okay, thanks very much. Second is David Hutniak. Take your time. Great, thanks for coming. Up to five minutes.
Good evening, your worship and council. My name is David Hutniak. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Landlord BC. I'm here on behalf of our 3,300 members who are owners and managers of rental housing in strong support of this new rental housing project at Renfro Street and East 10th. This is a really exciting day for renters in Vancouver, as you consider the first applications for the creation of desperately needed new rental homes under the moderate income rental housing pilot program. It is particularly encouraging to see that the proponent for this project, a Vancouver-based, family-owned enterprise with a 50-year legacy of building community-based housing, has answered the call to help us grow the supply of new secure purpose-built rental homes, a housing typology largely ignored for the past 40 years. The proponent recognizes that Vancouver families are in dire need of more housing options, and we are pleased that they have renewed their commitment to building and managing high-quality purpose-built rental housing. Vancouver renters, both current and future, need you to unanimously say yes to this proposal. The neighborhood where this project will be built could not be more perfect for the new homes and commercial opportunities being proposed. The neighborhood is well-served with community amenities, schools, employment options, and transit. When one includes the significant affordability objectives of the MIRP program, we have an opportunity to not only take action for current renters, but also the next generation of workers who will be, pardon me, who will be moving into this neighborhood and these homes as they seek and fill jobs in our community. This past year, not including tonight, I've spoken at 17 public hearings in support of over 1,700 units of secure purpose-built rental housing projects in multiple municipalities. I fully expect those in opposition to this project will, of course, share with you the normal litany of objections that we hear over and over again every time a new rental project comes before this council. The fact is, there are huge negative social and economic consequences every time we say no to another purpose-built rental project. I think it's time we all say yes. So, your worship and council, you have the power to add what I believe is 178 desperately needed new secure purpose-built rental homes in our community, 36 of which will be geared to those earning between $30,000 and $50,000, $80,000 per year. All you have to do is say yes to this project. What a great opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. And do you have questions, Councilor Weep?
Yeah, thank you for coming in today. And showing your support for our rental incentive program. And one of the things is, this is the first project you've come to speak on that actually has the rent increases tied to units. Are you supportive of seeing that more in the future?
No, I'm not.
You are supportive of this program?
I am supportive of this program. It's a pilot project. I'd like to see whether or not it'll work, whether or not vacancy control will be sustainable for the affordable units. I think as you, the proponent has shared with you, you know, this is very close to a nonprofit opportunity. But as I said in my opening comments, they've been in the community building homes for 50 years, and we applaud them for taking this risk. But I'm anxious to see whether this will work. But to answer your question, no, we do not support it broadly.
But you are excited about the fact that this will bring on more rental, hopefully in the next little bit, and we'll see how this pilot works.
You know, the more rental we have, the better, Councilor. And so I'm anxious to see if any of these projects will get built, and that's why we're here supporting it. I'm also here supporting the proponent again, because like I said, they are a community builder. And you know, I think it's really encouraging to see them coming to the table. Again, they actually, you know, it's nice to see them building rental again.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much. That's it for questions. Next speaker will be Mr. Vaughn Zikowski. Thanks very much. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you very much. So my name is Stefan Von Sichowski, and I'm here today on behalf of the Vancouver and District Labor Council, which represents roughly 60,000 unionized workers in the city of Vancouver and the surrounding areas. I'm here to speak in favor of approving this project, and in fact, all the projects that you're going to be looking at this evening. We understand that the rezoning, this is a rezoning that's one of three, I believe, that you're looking at as part of a pilot project for the moderate income rental housing pilot program. And it's no secret to anyone that Vancouver is in dire need of additional housing stock, and rental stock in particular, and more specifically of affordable rental stock for individuals in lower and moderate income brackets. The fact of the matter is that building more expensive housing and condos is never going to bring down the overall cost of housing and provide the affordable stock that we need. The trickle-down effect that some people talk about has not happened in the city and can't be expected to. Instead, we're seeing, we've seen that housing prices have soared in recent years, and that more and more working people have been forced to move further east and commute into the city for work. This leads to worsening congestion and to additional environmental impacts, as many live further east find themselves forced to drive due to a lack of public transit availability in less central areas. So our support for these developments is therefore, is a somewhat critical support. We believe in what's being done here in terms of providing these affordable units. We're very happy about the vacancy control. We think that is something that really should be looked at in all developments of affordable housing. However, we're concerned that 20% is too low. And we've heard that, you know, that there's thin margins, there's difficulties with that. But while there's 20% of units being put aside as affordable housing for $30,000 to $80,000 incomes, we don't know how many of those are for the lower end of that. And when we look at the overall numbers of how many units that is, it's not meeting what is anticipated to be needed in the city now and going into the future. We are living in an affordability crisis, and we need to have more housing that allows workers to live in the city that they work in. And we need it urgently. We need a city that provides homes for all and neighborhoods for everyone. Insofar as this project will deliver some units to that end, we're supportive of that. But a recent study by the Canadian Centre of Policy Alternatives urged the publicly funded construction of 10,000 units of non-market affordable housing per year in the metro Vancouver area. This number was based on annual growth in the population, backlog demand for housing from the homeless, low-income seniors, immigrants, refugees, and so forth. And we agree with that proposal as well. All levels of government need to step up and begin the mass construction of affordable housing in order to solve this crisis as quickly as possible. And we've heard and we know that, that there aren't a lot of private developers lining up to do that, right, for any number of reasons. Not here to speak on that. But that being the case, we believe the public needs to look at this as a public good. And we've just passed Human Rights Day on December 10th, and so it's also a good reminder for us all to reflect on that housing is indeed a human right. Not just rhetoric or platitude, but an actual right that is specified in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, to which Canada is a signatory. So ultimately, if the construction of affordable housing on that level can't be done privately, then all levels of government have a responsibility to make sure that it does happen and that citizens of all income levels have access to housing. I also want to quickly mention a couple of things about how these developments are done. We encourage the city to look at construction through community benefit agreements whenever possible. Whether that's a possibility in any of these projects, I do not know, but I'm happy to talk to any of the councilors about that as well in the future, if you wish. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. I have a question from Councilor Frye.
Mr. Vaughn Zikowski, nice to see you. And I appreciate, and you're here speaking on behalf of your membership?
Correct.
And was your membership unanimous in support for this project?
Yes. So the Labor Council passed a motion last month in support of the pilot project. And so we are in support of the project as a whole. As I mentioned, somewhat critical that we believe more needs to be done, but we are supportive of it, yeah.
Yeah. And so you mentioned that you thought 20% inclusion was low. And do you, would you like to see that increased, or are you more interested in seeing the 10,000 units of public housing a year as per the CCPA recommendations?
Well, whichever one gets us those units, right? We're not opposed to those units being produced privately if it's possible, but we think the government has a role to play in producing them publicly and urge that as well. I think that it's a matter of the number of units, right? 20%, when I say it's too low, it's not just because it's lower numbers, because the number of units that produces don't come anywhere close to the numbers that we're projected to need, so.
Okay, that's good. Now, and lastly, I mean, as you are representing organized labor in this city, and I'm wondering, one of the things that we see in this project, and of course, we're here to talk about this specific project, and obviously with the context of this larger pilot and what it means for all of us moving forward. But on this specific project, I note that the location is very close to, it's walkable, there's lots of shopping around, there's a Skytrain right there, there's lots of transit, yet we're including a lot of car parking nonetheless. And that obviously, as Mr. Molnar alluded, is about $50,000 bucks a unit. Do you, does your membership have a position on the dedication of space and resources to cars versus a more sort of transit-friendly approach to building housing?
That's a good question. I would have to say that we do not, although I would say that certainly, construction of this kind of housing near access to transit makes sense. And we want, you know, for environmental reasons and so forth, obviously, to get people out of cars when possible. I've heard, I heard the rationale, and I'm sure that's been looked at, but I wouldn't say we have a position on it, no.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Thanks for coming in today. Last listed speaker is Diane Faber. Last listed speaker is Diane Faber. Take your time. Five minutes whenever you're ready.
My name is Diane Faber, and I'm a private investor in the Molnar project. And I'd like to speak on behalf of this as an investor and also as a member of the community that is very socially responsible. I might remind everybody that this is a pilot project, and it does meet demand. If we look at the fall 2019 Metro Vancouver update that comes around to us all, it claims that many people are finding it harder to access affordable rentals, that the shortage of rental housing and the growing population, together with incomes not keeping pace with rental costs, are compounding the housing crisis. So there is, I mean, that's just one example. For a long time now, we've all been aware of this crisis, but how do we deal with it? Well, we haven't dealt with it for many, many years. So The Vancouver Sun on November 22, 2019, talked about the housing crisis fueling fresh ideas. And Mike Hurley, Chair of the Metro Vancouver Housing Committee, claimed that we are pursuing opportunities and new partnerships to provide affordable, accessible, and high-quality homes for people who need them. And I think this is what supports this project, that it meets, it supplies the demand that's required, and it also establishes new partnerships. And as a pilot project, meeting both of those things, I very much support the rezoning. The other thing is that there isn't a lot of rentals in the east-west side of Vancouver. And I think there's a need to support the rezoning on that basis as well, because there is a lot of wonderful things around the Renfrew Project that support affordable housing and enable our city to keep the population in, you know, working and having access to jobs and not having to move out so much to other areas and leave jobs and start new jobs. I think that the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Project is an attempt to successfully collaborate between the city and the private sectors in a socially responsible way. It's an attempt to increase rental property, thus reducing demand and eventually reducing the ever-increasing rents. And if you have more low-rental buildings, you will eventually stabilize rents, and rents will go down. I mean, I know that there are in many areas, this area, in other areas, there are lots and lots of young people that are all mashed in together in one or two bedrooms, and they're paying rents that are quite increasingly high and unbelievable. The Renfrew Project, I think, is perfectly suited to fill all the voids that rental properties need to fill. Affordable, containing 20% affordable housing. Later on, we can, you know, you can see how this goes with 20%, and if it all works out and there's still a commitment from private investment, which we obviously need in this city, then possibly there would be an attempt to increase that. But I think we have to start somewhere, and I think a pilot project, as it's named, is a very good place to start. This area of Renfrew is close to the growing cities of Burnaby and Vancouver with ever-expanding workforces. It's, as we all know, situated on the rapid transit lines that provide affordable, reliable, and efficient transport. It's close to parks and recreation centers such as Trout Lake and the Italian Community Center and the like, and it's close to schools, universities, BCIT, Emily Carr, and trades institutes. It's close to restaurants and shopping centers that are already there. These things already exist in that area. So I think that it's perfectly suitable to be supported. Vancouver, just one other thing, is behind a lot of other major cities. We produced 620 market rental apartments in 2019, short by thousands. By comparison, Seattle, taking that as just as an example, produced 14,000 in 2018, thereby reducing rental, reducing and stabilizing rents, which is something that we have to consider when we're looking at this project. We want to reduce, we want to stabilize rents, and we only do that by building more rental properties and more rental incomes.
Great, thank you very much. That is the five minutes, and I don't see anybody on the question queue for you, so okay, Councillor Bly actually has just come on the queue, so please go ahead, Councillor Bly. Sorry, ma'am.
Miss Faber, I just have a couple of questions for you.
Yep.
Miss Faber.
Just a question there.
That's okay. And forgive me if I, I just wanted to point out, I think, if memory serves me correctly, you were one of the first in the early 2000s to identify a need for co-work space. Is that correct?
I was awarded by Van City the Ethics in Action Award for setting up factory situation for people with disabilities. And I've done a lot of work, I worked for 20 years in the community with street youth. And I have set up workshops to teach them marketable work skills and to try and also find them some sort of affordable housing once we mentored them, had them mentored with people in jobs. So I'm fully aware of the whole aspect of social responsibility, and I think this project is an excellent pilot project to get started, because we're not doing anything, we're just stagnating.
Right, so I appreciate that further context and lens that you bring to this project and your comments. Some people may question the need or the sort of anticipated population growth that these types of projects will serve the need for this kind of housing. And I just wonder, I know you, over the decades, I've known you from different places and professionally, and you may not recall, but I do. And so I just always found you quite innovative and ahead of the times in terms of the way that you've looked at things. So I just wonder if you could comment on what that growing need, as you see it, and some of these queries around estimated population for, that would sort of justify us leaning into these types of projects as we move forward as a council?
Well, I think it's at a time now where something has to be done. You know, there are so many people, and when I look around, as I said earlier, to the number of young people that are paying $800,000, $1,200 a month to share a space with three or four other students in a two- or three-bedroom place, I mean, that's our future. You know, I have 13 grandchildren. I don't want them to be sharing a space with five other people and paying an enormous amount of rent. I think this is what we have to do. We have to start somewhere, and we have to get private investors involved. And quite frankly, this project's been going on for years, you know, and we're nowhere. We have been nowhere. Hopefully, we will be after this, but it becomes very frustrating. And then, you know, you begin to think, well, you know, I don't have a lot of money, should I be putting it somewhere else?
Right.
And I think a lot of investors feel that way when things drag on and on and on and on and on, and nobody's come up with anything better. I think this project is one that will fly, and I think it is the beginning of many, many projects that are similar. It should be.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No more questions. Appreciate you coming in this evening. Councillor, so I am going to now call for any speakers, because we've listed, but I will not close the list, so you have time to ask questions to staff and council if you wish to go to a second round. So I'm going to call then for the first time. Does anybody else wish to speak to this project? I'm going to call a second time. Does anybody wish to speak to this application? And calling a third time, anybody else wish to speak to this? Okay, I don't see anybody. So councillor, then, if you have any questions to staff and the applicant, this is the time to do it. And then, once that's done, I will close the, close the speakers' list. Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, to staff. Have you guys got any idea what the impact of this upzoning will be on the adjacent single-family homes to the west? Will it be increasing their property value in taxes, do you think?
Thank you. So one of the big pieces, analysis that we've done on rental over the last year is looking at what the impact of, on single detached home values of increasing the density for rental housing to exactly these kinds of forms and density would be. And all the financial analysis that we've done over that course of that time was that really the rental housing, because the rental tenure, and particularly in this case, because of the secured affordability and 20% of the floor area, we wouldn't really be seeing an increase in land value on these sites.
Is this part of the Grandview Plan or something where additional density is planned for that area, just directly to the west?
No, this is outside of the Grandview Woodland Plan area, so this would, this would be coming in under the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program, which identified appropriate areas for housing of this form.
So nothing in terms of increased density is planned for that section immediately to the west?
For the RS zone section to the west, there, no, it's not part of a plan. So it's the kind of area that we'd be looking at and considering as we go into something like the Vancouver Plan process and having that conversation with communities.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Dushinova, either staff or the applicant?
Thanks for the applicant. And it's a question that I suggested to staff that I would ask you earlier regarding the 2.2% increase in tax that you're allowed under the tenancy, the Residential Tenancy Act. I'm wondering if that, by any chance, I mean, how does that work in your pro forma, considering fluctuating tax rates in the city of Vancouver? I mean, is it something that will affect the viability?
Basically, if I could predict that, I would predict, I would focus on the lottery numbers next week, because, I mean, it's very difficult to answer your question, just as difficult as the lottery numbers next week, because everything changes. Hopefully, you will have some sensibility and won't raise the taxes too much. And beyond, we are on the hope for the best program, because we don't know how much you will raise the taxes, but sure, if you raise it 8% or 9%, it will be very harmful and could be that we come back to you and ask you to relax the, I mean, if it's unforcing hard circumstances, then we have to react to that. But, I mean, we're just talking about something which we don't know.
Okay, so let's say the 8.2% that's proposed, and this is about this rezoning, because it's about the viability of, long-term of the project. It is, it is, it's about the long-term.
No, I'm sorry, we're going to contain it, this project, not talking.
That's what I'm saying. I'm asking about the pro forma on this project. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I can't see you over the point set. I apologize. I, I.
At the budget hearings.
Specifically to this project, if you, if taxes are to go up and you're only allowed to raise taxes 2.2% per year annually, are you concerned about how that will affect you in the long term? Will that amount to higher rents in the long term for you as tenants move out and other tenants move in?
Well, we can't touch the 20% because that is frozen into the agreement, but the 80% of the other apartments, we can play with and add to their burden, but.
So what we'll see is more of a divide between those two groups, correct? 20% and 80%?
It would help to let your questioner finish.
Oh, I'm just asking, is that going to create in the 80%?
The 80% we can increase, the 20% we can't increase.
And you would have to increase those rents when new tenants came in, because you're allowed to, to make sure that costs were covered and make it viable, is that correct?
That's the only choice for survival, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for keeping me focused, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask about.
No problem. Thanks, Councillor Boyle.
Thanks, I just have a question for staff, actually, that's still, great.
Staff or applicant?
So I'm hoping you can speak to, is there, in past projects, when there's a DCL waiver, there's a kind of cap to the rents that can be charged in those units to the average? Is that also the case in this project for that 80%?
Right, thank you very much for the question. So that is actually what had changed on November 26. The council directed staff to make changes to the DCL bylaw, which would then allow projects that are providing a minimum of 20% floor area at the moderate income rates, which this project is doing, who would then qualify for the term for profitable rental housing and therefore could qualify for DCL waiver while still setting the rents on the 80% or the remaining market units according to market conditions. So the answer would be no, then. There isn't a maximum average starting rent on the market units.
Okay, great, just adjusting to all the policies, so thanks for, thanks, that's all.
Thanks very much. Councillor Kerr?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, seeing no one else on the list with questions, I'm prepared to move the recommendations in this report along with the content of the December 11 Yellow Memo.
Okay, we just have a couple of steps before that. I do have to now close the speakers' list, though. We did a little bit differently, because I just wanted to get around to questions in beforehand, so I am going to move to close the speakers' list. And we have to go through comments for, I have to ask the applicant if they have any closing comments? Has staff have any closing comments? And councillor can still ask questions. Do you have any other questions you'd like to ask? Okay, thanks very much. So now, Councillor Kerr? Thanks, it was a little unusual there, but just make sure to follow the procedures.
Absolutely. My apologies, I thought you'd closed the list, but that's fine, it's all good. So, to repeat myself, I'm prepared to move the recommendations in this report along with the contents of the Yellow Memo of December 11, and prepared to speak for it. I want to start by just saying, I was on council at the time that the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Project came into being. And at the time, the proposal was to have the rents in the moderate income range be at 20% below market. And it had been, it had arisen out of our Housing Vancouver Report, which stated clearly we needed to do the right supply of housing. And I thought to myself, how do we define that? And I asked staff, how do we define right supply? And the answer was, the right supply is looking at the kind of income that is affordable for people at certain income range, based on the traditional and well-acknowledged principle of 30% of a household income. So I said, well, why don't we change this, then, to be at 30% of a household income instead of 20% below market? And I remember such consternation at the council table and, I think even amongst staff at the time. We're not going to get any applications, and, you know, we're not going to make this work. And, but councillor did vote for it. I felt very happy about that. And then told me later, there were applications, and I'm so pleased to be moving this first application before us at public hearing, because I think it really is what we need to be doing. And I know it's a stretch, but I'm so thankful that there are people coming forward willing to do that. So I thank the applicant for putting in under this program and staff for their work to make this work. And for councillor's edification in reading the report, if you notice, it says in there that the median household income of the Renfrew-Collingwood neighborhood is $64,179 a year. That would be at 30% of income, affordability at $1,609 a month. So, in other words, up to two-bedroom units are affordable at the median income of the households within this neighborhood. Again, that's, I think, exactly what we had been wanting for. And yes, I can see we would like to see more than 20%, but we are at least seeing a start at the affordable, the truly affordable housing that I think everybody in this city wants. So I'm going to be running out of time, but just to say, I'm also pleased to see it's a low-emission green building. And it's right that the, I think that the urban design panel and the public who came to speak suggested its proximity to rapid transit, the Skytrain station may warrant an increased density, and that was taken in by staff and by the applicant. I think it's, I'm. I think it's, I'm, some people may think, oh, there is a DCL waiver, but it was, it's rather serendipitous in my mind, at the same time as we ask for increased heightened density, which actually increased the building cost, because going from wood frame to concrete does cost more, that it sort of has coincided with a DCL waiver, which, as was explained to us, helps create affordability for the project. So it is, for those reasons, that's, as I say, I'm supportive of this project, and I'm happy to see it a go.
Thanks, do you have a second here for this? I saw Counselor DeShonova hand first, so I seconded, thanks very much, and you're on the list next, up to five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, too, remember the moderate, I know MERP can be quite the mouthful, but the moderate income rental pilot project coming forward in its very early stages, because I think it's important to note, and we are talking about this application, but I want to thank our staff for being so careful in the policy that has brought this to us here. And although there were questions from council tonight, I feel that many of those questions had already been answered before we were here, because of the thorough policy report and the information we've received. I, I'm hoping that this really will move our city in the direction of not only as city-led policy, but that we can champion this. And this rezoning specifically can be an example of what we can do, and as, and I think all of us around here, what I've heard each and every council member say at some point in different council meetings, is that we do have to address affordability in the city and unaffordability, especially in housing, when we have a homeless population where the count increases, when we have services to offer in our city, but we just aren't able to bring those prices down, not at the scale that we need to. So I'm hoping that this will be the first of many projects like this, and I will support it, because the reason that I ran for council was to bring my knowledge and to try and fight for more affordable housing in our community, and I think that this is a really good example of that. I also think that it's important to note, and one of the other reasons that I will be supporting this, is with the 20% to 80%, but each door looking the same, I, I've never been a fan of ghettoizing people. I don't think that we should know which door is at that 20, is in that 20%, and which door is at that 80%. And I think that this really will help us to create complete communities. And I think that this will be not only monumental for Vancouver, but iconic, because this will be, this is, will be, if it does pass, and I hope it does, and I will be supporting it, but I hope that it does pass, and it will be the first under this policy. And it gives me hope for my daughter, who's only two, that one day she might be able to afford to live in the city of Vancouver. Because right now, that's not something that I see within reach, but I'm hoping that the more and more projects that we see like this, it will become closer and closer within reach for us. So for that reason, I wholeheartedly support this. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes, please.
I'll be brief. You'll have to excuse me, I'm losing my voice a bit. I will support this application in this pilot project. While I continue to question the veracity of the underlying data in the Housing Vancouver Plan and the regional growth strategy, notwithstanding, there is without question need for this type of development, and it ticks all the boxes. Its location, the height and massing, and the composition are all consistent, I think, with what is needed in this city. And so I just wanted to speak out and say thank you, Mr. Molnar. I think this is an excellent project, and you have my support.
Thank you, Counselor Hardwick. On to Counselor Swanson.
Yeah, I don't think MERP is going to save us. I don't think it is delivering the right supply. Using the city stats, the richest 28% of renters get 80% of the units in these buildings. The middle 40% of renters get the 20% that we're seeing are affordable. And the poorest 32% of renters get nothing. So this isn't the right supply. And I'm really upset about the DCLs being waived. The DCLs would amount to over $100,000 per unit. It seems like if we're going to be waiving the DCLs, we should be getting more affordable units, or the units that we're getting that are allegedly affordable should be, have deeper affordability. The good things about it are, I don't think this one is going to gentrify, because the buildings around there, the school, the tech center, they're not going to be gentrified. So I think that's good. The other thing that's good is, we're getting a foot in the door on vacancy control. How many apartment units do we have in the city? Like 130,000 or something? So if these two pass, we'll have 37 with vacancy control. That would be great. So I think that's really important. I think we need to start picking off more and more units that we can have vacancy control on. And so, in spite of the DCL being waived, which I don't really like, I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you, Counselor Swanson. Counselor Weeb?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the Molnar Group for coming and being the first ones to this project. I will be supportive of the project. I like the fact that staff are really pushing for the amenity space on the roof. I think the livability is not just in the city, but also in the buildings. I'm seeing that more and more in the projects, that we're really ensuring that we're connecting the residents together, as well as the community. I did like the proponent talking about how maybe using some of the parking for the commercial, so they really recognize the area, and I think that's been showcased in other buildings, that you do understand the neighborhoods that you work in, and so I really reflect that in the design, so I will be supportive of the project.
Thank you very much, Counselor Boyle.
Thanks, I just also wanted to add my voice of support. I think they're beautiful buildings, and they're going to be great homes for neighbors and residents in this city. I would have been happy to see them be taller with more units for folks who need them, but it's a pilot, and I hope we'll see it built and many more after. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle. I don't see any other councillors on the list. So I can move to a vote. And clerks can just pull the vote up on the screen? Great, so that's passed unanimously. Thanks, council, for that this evening. Okay, so now we're, we have had the staff presentation on the second item. So what I'm going to do now is move to do what we just did. If there are any other questions on the second project, please put your name on this. One second, sorry. Read out the summary, that's right. I'm sorry, so we're going to hear the summary of the second application.
This is an, this is an application by Wentley Architecture Limited to rezone 2603 to 2655 Rendrew Street, from RS1, One Family Dwelling District to CD1 District, to permit the development of a seven-story mixed-use building containing commercial uses at grade and 82 secured residential units with 20% of the residential floor area secured as moderate income units. A building height of 25.8 meters, or 84.5 feet, and a floor space ratio of 3.54 are proposed. The following correspondence was received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Five pieces of correspondence, along with one petition, with 12 signatures in support of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 p.m. today.
Thank you very much. Does the applicant wish to say anything to this? No, okay, but here to answer questions, any questions from council to staff or the applicant? Okay, if Counselor Weeb on the list, please go up to five minutes. You're okay? All right, thank you, Counselor Weeb. Okay, so now we have a couple, I don't see anybody else on the list, so we can move to speakers. I have Jaclyn von Rumel. Jaclyn von Rumel? Thanks for coming in, and you have up to five minutes.
Thank you, good evening. I would like to support the project that we are dealing with right now, for basically the same reasons that we heard already for the Nextdoor project. I don't have much more to add to everything that was said, since they are side by side. I can see that this is a vibrant and growing community, and there are schools, college, business park, and of course, many offices, buildings, and Skytrain, and the busy bus route number nine on East Broadway, just around the corner, and the famous Skytrain. There is an incredibly strong need for rental residential units, especially if they are moderately priced, like we are dealing with this in this particular case. And Vancouver desperately needs more housing around Skytrain. And we want to keep people in Vancouver. We have lost so many people already, mostly young people, they just can't afford to live in Vancouver. And we need young people, we need to grow with them, we need them, we cannot be without them, we cannot be a city of older people only. And this is what we see more and more. It's really heartbreaking, we have to stop this, we have to keep people in Vancouver, we have to make it affordable. This is, this is a start, it's a pilot project, but it's a brilliant pilot project. We have to have more of those. And we can all see, we all agree, I can see that, it is from the heart, everybody is speaking from their heart. And also, if we have more projects, more rental projects, the rent will go down, and it's like a supply and demand, and it is really needed to have more of those. The project is attractive, it fits very well in the community, it's well-built, according to the tradition of what the Molnar Group has been done before, for which they are famous. And we, I support this project, and I ask city councillors and everybody here to support it, so it can start, the sooner the better. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in, there's no questions for you, but appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us tonight. I have Diane Faber. Right. Sorry. I read it like I didn't know who you were.
I don't have too much to add to what I said before, except that I think that this building, like the other, is a very attractive place, and it has the sort of setup the Molnar's have developed through their architecture for families. And I, the one thing that I am very conscious of now, just recently, is that we're actually losing our neighborhoods, and we don't see so many children playing on the street or walking around for Halloween. I think this type of building and this type of project is really good for families to have and rent, and keep our neighborhoods going.
Thanks very much, and there's no questions for you? Appreciate again your thoughts on this project. Okay, council, so we're at the end of listed speakers, so I will call now for, is there anybody else that would like to speak to this project? And by law, I have to call three times, so I'm calling the first time. Anybody else from the public galleries like to speak to this project? Second call. Now there's some people in the lobby, so, last call, third call, I get the head shakes, so we don't have anybody out there wishes to speak, so seeing there are no speakers, the speakers list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received in this item after 5:00 today, we're going to close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments. Does the applicant have any closing comments? Thanks very much. Staff have any closing comments? No? Okay. Council have any questions for staff? Counselor Kirby Young, I have you on the list for questions.
No, I'm happy to move the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I don't see anybody else on the list to ask questions, so we've got Counselor Kirby Young moving them.
Together with the accompanying Yellow Memo.
Okay. Nothing else to say? Okay, second, Counselor Bly, seconded, thanks very much. And, great, and if there's any debate, Counselor Hardwick.
Thank you. As with the prior application, I will be supporting this application. It ticks all the boxes, according to the pilot program of MERP. We shall see, the jury is out on this program, but I think as the first two applications to go through under this pilot program, that these, again, tick the boxes and are appropriate. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hardwick. Counselor Bly?
Yeah, I'd like to speak in support of the projects as well. I feel compelled to provide comments, because this is my neighborhood. So we, my son goes to MENTech, or did go, so we, I know that this neighborhood can absorb this density, it probably could have absorbed a little more. But I think that what we see in that neighborhood is a lot of restaurants and coffee shops supporting the commercial business parks, and no housing for those folks that work in those, and, you know, I've even asked questions about, can we put rental on top of some of these commercial, you know, and so I know there's, you know, so we're working within a lot of different policies, so I think that this provides housing for exactly what we need, which is to keep workers close, livable city, walking, being able to walk to work, walk to transit. And so it does tick all those boxes, and I am certain there's a sense of excitement about the potential of pilot of MERP as a pilot policy going forward. And I also just want to acknowledge, I don't know for sure anything about this, but my sense is that this has been a collective group to fund and make this project happen, and that in itself, I think, is commendable. And that's what we need in society, is more people working together to fill a need. And so I just, I have no details on any of that, I'm not certain, but it's just my sense from our speakers. So, bravo, I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Weeb?
Yeah, I'm more supportive of this one than the first one, because of the natural assets, so this one's planting more trees, and hopefully on the first project, there might be an ability, because it says that we're actually doing, reducing the tree cover. It's such a big part of livability in Vancouver, and you talked about how amazing this city is. So if there's an opportunity to add more greenery to the first project, but I'm very supportive of this project for the amount of trees that are being planted. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Dominato. I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. It's early, it's early, you'll have some chances to say it again.
That's the problem, you're both wearing red.
There we go, there we go.
Please, go ahead.
I just, I also wanted to speak in support of this, and I think that the fact that we just talked about the first, and here we are talking about the second moderate income rental pilot, I'm hoping that it's not going to be a pilot forever. I do think that the east side of Vancouver, when I look at the possibilities and opportunities for density, I think when we say the word density in the city, it can be divisive, and I don't think it should be, because I don't think housing should be divisive. I don't think that building homes for people should be divisive. It seems to get divisive when we talk about the affordability and the cost of it. And I think that, you know, as I'd said before, and I won't belabor it, not ghettoizing people, and having a model that really does financially, within the pro forma sustain itself, having some market rents subsidize other rents. I'd like to thank the applicant. I'd also like to thank our staff for their great work on this, and happy to support this. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Frye?
Mayor, thanks, Mayor. And, you know, having consistently voted against DCL waiver projects in the past, because I didn't think it was the best deal that we could get, I am happy to support this last one and this one, because I think that we are moving the bar and raising the expectation, but certainly we're building the kind of affordability that we are sorely lacking. And I really think that the vacancy control component is critical to the trade-off that we're giving as a city when we give these DCL waivers. So I appreciate this as a pilot, and I do hope to see it evolve over time and get more robust. I will say, too, that I really appreciate the designs and... I will say too that I really appreciate the designs and the location. I'm not crazy about the amount of parking given the location, but we'll live with that. And I also just do want to commend the Molnar group. I have had the pleasure of chatting with some of the principals of the Molnar group and appreciate their genuine interest in solving some of our affordability issues. And I know that you have some great ideas about maybe streamlining our DP and rezoning processes. And I hope that those are conversations that you're having with our staff as we move forward and try and dig deeper for affordability. So happy to support these projects.
Thank you very much councillor Swanson.
Well, just to sort of repeat, the bad things are it's not going to solve the affordability problem. We desperately need more non-market housing. We desperately need a source of revenue to pay for that. Just a DCL waiver would build, by my calculations, seventeen modular units to get seventeen homeless people off the street if we could have that. The good things are no windowless units, no rich door and poor door. I don't think there'll be any gentrification, given the site and vacancy control. So, I'm in.
Councillor Swanson, thank you very much. And that's it for speakers, so I guess we can move to a vote then. Of course, just make sure this remains up on screen for a few seconds so folks can see. So that one has also passed unanimously. Just going to put it up on the screen. Thanks very much, Mr. Baldar. We're in between applications. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, we're moving on to our third application, which is rezoning of 1805 Larch Street. Have the clerk, just wait for a second as the chamber is clear here and then move on with the reading of the application. Just wait one second here. Okay, council, I'm going to call us back to order so we can hear the application. Councillor Weeb, if I can. Councillor Weeb? Yep, thanks for just calling everybody back to order. Thank you very much. So clerk, if you could read out the application for 1805 Larch Street, please.
This is an application by Metric Architecture to rezone 1805 Larch Street from RT8 Two Family Dwelling District to CD1 District to permit the development of a five-story residential building containing sixty-three secured rental residential units with twenty percent of the residential floor area being secured as moderate income units. A building height of twenty point five meters or sixty-seven point one feet and a floor space ratio of two point five three are proposed. The following correspondence was received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. A hundred and twenty-one pieces of correspondence in support, sixty-nine pieces of correspondence, along with one petition with approximately three hundred and fifteen signatures, and another petition with approximately four hundred and ninety-five signatures in opposition, and two pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 7:00 p.m. today.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have Robert White here from the rezoning center to present. And then we'll move on to questions after that. So please, thanks for coming and please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Robert White, rezoning planner for this application, which proposes to rezone a site at 1805 Larch Street under the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program. I'll note a memorandum is included in the agenda package, which describes a correction to the draft CD1 bylaw as well as a change to the housing agreement condition of enactment resulting from council's approved direction on the rental incentives review two weeks ago. These changes are included in the posted bylaw and summary and recommendation in the agenda package and no additional action is necessary. The site is located in Kitzellano on the southwest corner of Larch Street and West Second Avenue, shown here in red at the center of the map. It's approximately sixteen hundred square meters with a frontage of about thirty-six meters along Larch Street and forty-six meters along West Second Avenue. It is currently zoned RT8 for two family dwellings or duplexes, and this zoning extends further west of Larch. Sites to the east of Larch are zoned RM4 for multiple dwellings or small apartment buildings. C2 commercial sites are located nearby along West Fourth Avenue to the south. To help visualize these zoning districts, the image on the left shows properties located just to the north of the subject site that are zoned RT8. This zoning anticipates houses and duplexes. If redevelopment were to occur at 1805 Larch under existing zoning, it would likely be in the form of row houses or duplexes up to two or three stories. The image on the right shows a property located to the east of the site, zoned RM4. This zoning anticipates four-story apartment buildings. The height of new buildings under both of these zones is limited to thirty-five feet. This is a view from above looking northeast with the site outlined in red showing the difference in buildings to the east and west sides of the zoning boundary along Larch Street. On the right of this image, a number of taller buildings can be seen. These were built under the existing apartment zone before council approved zoning changes in the nineteen seventies, which included lowering the height limit for new apartment buildings in this area to thirty-five feet. Buildings in the immediate vicinity generally measure between thirty to thirty-five feet. The building at Larch and West Third Avenue, just to the right of Larch Street, the Larch Street label on this image, measures approximately fifty-five feet. This area of Kitzellano is rich with amenities. Here you can see parks, schools, childcare, commercial areas, and other amenities near the site. At the top of the map, English Bay and the Kitzellano Pool, including the Kitzellano Bandstand, are located just outside of a five-minute walk from the site. Seven parks, four public and independent schools, Kitzellano Library, Kitzellano Neighborhood House, and multiple shopping districts, transit routes and bike routes are all located within an approximately ten-minute walk of the site. In addition, Kitzellano Secondary School, Kitzellano Community Center, and Connaught Park, including the Kitzellano Rink and Farmers Market, are located within a fifteen-minute walk south. And the Arbutus Greenway and Delamont Park are located within a fifteen-minute walk southeast. The site is currently built with a two-story church with mature landscaping on both street frontages. Following declining attendance, St. Mark's United Church ended services in 2013. The site was later put up for sale, purchased by the current owner, and the space was temporarily leased to the 10th church until October of this year when they relocated to Carnivan Elementary. Under the previous owner and in addition to church uses, a Montessori preschool operated on-site and the space was also made available to various community groups as well as a cold-weather emergency shelter. The building itself was originally constructed in nineteen sixty-two and was renovated in the nineteen nineties. Heritage staff have determined the building does not include any historic architectural features. There are no residential tenants on this site. Above, an image of the site from the lane showing the main and lower floors of the existing building with direct access on this laneway level. And below, an image of the site from Second Avenue showing the covered parking pass-through to the lane and the abundant greenery of the site. These images also illustrate the slope of the site, falling five meters or approximately seventeen feet from the northeast corner at Larch and Second to the southwest corner at the lane. After extensive consultation, council approved in November 2017 the Housing Vancouver Strategy. The strategy included key objectives to prioritize rental housing, target a key gap identified for households earning a moderate income, and explore the feasibility and development industry interest in creating new moderate income units in different forms and at different locations. Council approved the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program along with the strategy, and this is the program which enables consideration of this rezoning application. Its intent is to encourage development of new rental units permanently secured for moderate income households, being those earning between thirty to eighty thousand dollars per year. Applications under the policy must secure at least twenty percent of the proposed residential floor area for moderate income rental units. Proposals were considered based on a number of criteria, including affordability, number of new rental units created, impact on existing renters, and neighborhood fit. This site, a larger site off an arterial street, can be considered for a building of up to six stories under this policy. This application proposes to rezone the site from RT8 to CD1 to permit the development of a five-story building with sixty-three secured rental residential units, including twenty percent of the floor space secured as moderate income rental units or approximately thirteen units. The model on the floor of council represents the proposal and does not reflect staff recommendations included in Appendix B. As noted in the report, staff recommendations include a reduction in height, a lower floor space ratio of two point five three, and other changes as represented in the perspective image shown on this slide. I'll provide further details on these recommendations later in this presentation. A unit mix including twenty-two studio units, fifteen one-bedroom units, twenty-two bedroom units, and six three-bedroom units is recommended, and this achieves a family unit mix of approximately forty-one percent, exceeding the thirty-five percent required in the family room housing mixed policy. The moderate income units would consist of five studios, four one-bedrooms, three two-bedrooms, and one three-bedroom unit. Unit sizes are comparable across the market and moderate income units, and no micro-dwelling units are proposed in this application. As part of MERP, each application is required to provide a financial statement for review to assess the value of the project and determine if additional land lift has been created. Staff in Real Estate Services conducted the financial review and determined the value of additional density and incentives recommended is offset by the cost of securing the moderate income units and no additional land lift has been created. This image is an artist's rendering of the proposed building, again noting this does not reflect the recommendations in Appendix B. However, this rendering does portray the greenery to be retained, outlined in green. Of the twenty-eight trees currently on-site, this application proposes to retain twenty-four trees. In addition, new trees, shrubs, and other planting will be added across the site, including the laneway level. The application proposes approximately thirteen units for moderate income households at rates between nine hundred and fifty and two thousand dollars per month. This slide also includes some example occupations with incomes affordable at these rents. For instance, a studio moderate income rental unit would be affordable for a health services assistant. In addition to the moderate income units, the application proposed fifty market units at rates between nineteen hundred and fifty dollars and four thousand dollars per month. The columns in blue show the average market rents for newer buildings on the west side. On November 26th, council approved changes to the DCL bylaw, which included changes to the DCL waiver requirements. Under council's approved direction, projects which propose twenty percent moderate income rental units, such as this application, meet the affordability criteria for the waiver by securing the moderate income rents as noted in the memorandum included in the agenda package. This application is seeking the DCL waiver and meets the eligibility requirements for a waiver of approximately one point three million dollars. I'll note not all units will be affordable to all Vancouver residents. However, the DCL waiver enables the creation of new, much-needed rental units. Further, the moderate income unit rental rates and the average market rents for newer buildings on the west side are both well below the monthly cost of ownership, which for a median-priced unit on the west side can range from twenty-nine hundred dollars per month for a studio unit to over nine thousand dollars per month for a three-bedroom unit. All units would be secured through a housing agreement for the longer of the life of the building or sixty years, and the stratification and separate sale of individual units would be prohibited. The housing agreement would also limit the rates at which rents for the moderate income rental units may be increased, even on a change in tenant. A pre-application open house was held in 2018 and was attended by approximately one hundred and thirteen people. Following submission of the rezoning application, a city-hosted open house was held in April of 2019 and was attended by approximately three hundred and eighty people. We also met with a small group of neighbors in May to hear additional concerns. The application drawings and details were made available online following the application submission, as well as my contact information and a form to easily submit feedback. In total, we received approximately four hundred and sixty pieces of feedback, as well as one petition opposing the application, which contained approximately three hundred and fifty-two signatures. We heard a variety of concerns throughout the review of this application. Comments were categorized and sorted to understand the key themes of support and concern. Key themes of support included the contextual fit, building height, proposed affordability, and the highly walkable location. Key themes of concern included the contextual fit, building height, neighborhood consultation, and the loss of the church community space. In response to concerns around the contextual fit, form of development conditions of rezoning are included in Appendix B to increase the setback from the lane by approximately ten feet and to provide space for additional landscaping at the lane. The image on the top shows the building as proposed, while the image on the bottom shows what a response to this rezoning condition might look like with a photograph approximation of the adjacent house across the lane to the south. The application makes the most of the seventeen-foot slope down from Larch Street to the west by including three units on the lower laneway level shown here outlined in red. This is at the same level as the lower laneway level of the existing church building. And this is where the building reads as six stories with the rooftop amenity. This image also illustrates the enhanced landscaping conditions for the lane. Conditions are also included in Appendix B to improve the character of the building through more contextually appropriate doors and windows and approve porches and patio entries to the ground-level units. These ground-level units include five family units, four of which are targeted for moderate income households. Many of these ground-level units are proposed to be moderate income rental units fronting Larch and West Second, as well as at the laneway level. MERP allows the consideration of three-bedroom moderate income rental units with one inboard bedroom. This application proposes one such moderate income rental unit on the main floor, outlined in red, which includes one bedroom that does not have an external window. The bedroom would include a clear story window and glass doors. All units meet the city's livability standards and building code requirements, and conditions are included in Appendix B to ensure the livability standards are maintained. Following the review of the application and incorporating feedback from the public and the urban design panel, this report also recommends lowering the building height. This will be achieved by slightly decreasing the floor-to-floor heights, reducing the mass of the guardrail, and minimizing the features on the roof. The image on the left, sorry, the image on the right represents the change in response to the conditions of rezoning and includes the amenity room, recommended to be relocated from lower in the building up to the rooftop. Regarding concerns around consultation with the neighborhood on affordable housing, the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program is one way that we are pursuing goals laid out in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Over ten thousand residents, along with national and international housing experts, were consulted over the span of fourteen months as part of that Housing Vancouver process. For this specific rezoning application, nearly three hundred and eighty people attended the city-hosted open house a short walk from the site, as well as the one hundred and thirteen people who attended the applicant-led open house previous to that. And we received over four hundred and sixty pieces of feedback as part of our public process. Every comment received, as well as the support and recommendations from the urban design panel, informed the recommendations laid out in the report and presented before you tonight. Lastly, staff recognized the previous owner of this site provided the church space for community groups as well as the Montessori preschool. It became clear through early staff discussions that seeking a childcare or community space on this site, in addition to secured moderate income rental units, would not result in a financially viable project, given the size and context of the site, the building form which could be considered at this location under the policy, and council's priority to achieve new below-market rental units with no residential tenant displacement. to achieve new below-market rental units with no residential tenant displacement. In summary, staff recommend approval of this application to rezone 1805 Larch Street from RT8 to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report, as it meets the intent of the moderate income rental housing pilot program. If approved, the application would contribute 63 new secured market rental units, including approximately 13 units permanently secured for moderate income households, to help reach the city's goals identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Thank you. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. So, is the applicant team here to speak to the application? Right, would you like to speak or just answer questions? Okay, great.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for considering our proposal at 1805 Larch under the moderate income rental housing pilot program. My name is Tony Papa John. I'm a lifelong Vancouverite, born in Vancouver, and active member of our community, and director of Jameson Development Corp., the developer of the property. To give you a bit of background about us, we are a small, family-run business, and we have always lived, worked, and raised our families in the communities where we work. We are very committed to social, economic, environmental sustainability, and inclusivity. This proposal under MERP is not only in line with our commitments and values, it's directly in response to what the city and its residents have been asking for: more affordable housing choices and options. We are proud to be a partner with the City of Vancouver in the MERP Pilot Program. Most recently, in the city of North Vancouver during this past summer of 2019, our development company completed that city's first-ever moderate income rental building. It's a 96-unit secured rental building. It includes moderate income rental units and units with enhanced accessibility. The rents in this building are similar to those under Vancouver's MERP Pilot Program. It is both family and pet-friendly as well. In fact, over 25 years ago, we developed our first-ever purpose-built rental project right down the street in Kitsellano. This was before Vancouver's rental crisis, before skyrocketing home prices, and before programs and incentives like MERP. I grew up in Kits, actually within a short walk of 1805 Larch, and I remember my neighborhood in Kits as inclusive, economically and socially diverse neighborhood, and where many other immigrant families also called Kitsellano their home. In those days, the neighborhood was attainable to most. So as we all know, sadly, that's changed a lot over time, and to the point where it's not attainable anymore for many of Vancouver's residents. We are obviously strong supporters of the city's MERP Pilot Program and other recently passed rental initiatives. We want to contribute to our city now and in the future, and help achieve key housing goals outlined in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Make no mistake about it, this project will provide attainable workforce housing so people can live closer to where they work. Hard-working people like nurses, schoolteachers, police officers, firefighters, and employees of small businesses, the people who we all rely on every day. It will also create new, safe, environmentally sustainable, high-quality rental homes for 63 families who will be available, able to live in the area where the rental stock is aging and very hard to come by. Thirteen of these units are designated for moderate income households for the life of the building. The building will have more family-oriented two- and three-bedroom units than required under the Pilot Program, and the entire building will be pet-friendly. I also want to acknowledge that the proposed development in Kitsellano has been possible because of the combined efforts of our architectural team and entire consultant team, with consultation with the City of Vancouver. We've also received input from two open houses and advice from the urban design panel. This project, in addition to meeting the MERP requirements, has been improved and adjusted as a result of community feedback. All this has led to city staff report and the attached recommendation conditions which were prepared to go with and build this building. I'll now turn over to the architect and the landscape architect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Tony. Your worship and council, I'm Sheridan McCray from Metric Architects. I'm speaking to you today as the project architect, but also a local resident. I'd like to highlight a few key items about the design. Firstly, it's a unique site. It doesn't displace residents or active businesses. It doesn't require a lot consolidation, and there is no loss of heritage. A site like this in Kitsellano is really a once-in-a-generation opportunity for rental housing. Jameson asked us to create a design that pays particular attention to young families. That's why you see the large outside spaces, urban agricultural plots, place space, and a generous amenity room. The building follows the Green Building's plan for rezoning Path B, the large reductions in energy use, heating loads, and greenhouse gas emissions compared with typical construction. It will be photovoltaic-ready, allowing the project to install renewables to offset common area lighting, HVAC, energy uses in the future. It would also be zero fossil fuel emissions. Other sustainable strategies include low-emitting materials, integrated rainwater management, indoor air quality testing, and enhanced commissioning. I'd like to talk briefly about the context. We've maintained a dense tree buffer that will virtually hide much of the building from the street and will help maintain the existing character. This was a planning challenge, because keeping the trees restricts the footprint. We're proud to say that we were able to do this while creating 63 units. The new building footprint is almost the same as the existing footprint. We have introduced a podium at the rear to provide additional outdoor living spaces. We also incorporated generous planting to provide privacy and widen usable lane. On one of the questions of the lane neighborhood's proximity, we have a standard 20-foot wide lane, and we are nearly 90 feet separated from the closest wall of West Third Avenue Neighbors. Also, we are 50 feet away from our side, from the side elevation of 1837 Larch Street. In response to recent community feedback, we have reduced the building height twice, and we have been working to minimize the perceived height and massing through design. This includes introducing glass guardrails at the roof parapet, articulating the facades, as well as increasing the setbacks, particularly at the lane. I'll pass you now to Damon.
Good evening. My name is Damon Oriente. I'm the landscape architect on this project. I'd like just to quickly mention a couple of things, aspects of the landscape that I think are really unusual and important and excellent about this project. The first is, as Sheridan mentioned, the new building footprint sighting matches the existing building very closely. This means that all of the existing trees along the Second Avenue North property line and the west are able to be retained. So the big dug firs, the cherries, the dogwoods, the vine maples, the pines, those are all retained. The second interesting thing that's unique about this is that this generous setback gives us a chance to install a rainwater infiltration swale around those two perimeters of the site. So, along with the green roof, this swale is a really strong response to the tier-one rainwater management priorities. And finally, as Sheridan says, we have a low podium at the lane, residential living space, layered shrub and tree planting, so I think we're going to get a more achievable, a more livable and attractive lane as well. Thank you.
Thanks so much for that. We're just going to move to questions from council to staff or the applicant, and I have a number here. Councilor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start with questions for staff. My first one, I'm noting on page six, it says, "New development is intended to be compatible with the existing character of the area, neighborly building scale, and placement emphasized." And so I'm looking at slide three. I wonder if we could look at that of the presentation? I don't know if you'd like to answer this one? But I can see sort of just across the way, it looks like there's a number of other taller buildings in the area. Can you speak a bit more to the sort of broader surrounding context?
Let's see if I can find that slide.
So I'm sorry, council, you were looking for some information on the surrounding context?
Yeah, I'm just sort of in the spirit of the comment in the report, as I said, and I'm just conscious of time here. Development is intended to be compatible with the existing character of the area, neighborly building scale. And I'm seeing there, sort of on this far side of Larch, there seems to be a number of taller buildings. Can you give us some context about the broader area a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, this was definitely one of the challenges of the MERP policy, was looking at the context of each of these sites. In this specific location, we do have some taller buildings in the immediate vicinity. They were taller buildings that were approved under the existing zoning at that time when that zoning was changed.
How did the height of those compare, for example, to the 67.1 feet that's proposed here?
So the height of some of those buildings in particular are quite a bit taller in the 100-foot or so, kind of 13-story range.
Okay. And on that note, over on height, I noticed you had made a comment that some of the response to some of the public feedback was lowering the building height, and it seems to be in the report from 67.4 to 67.1. So is that .3 feet intended to make much of a difference?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So this is with the sloping site, and with some of the changes to the rooftop to include a recommendation of the amenity room on the roof, the measurement of the height of the building sort of followed the slope down. So while there's an approximate three-foot drop in the building height with the recommendations, because that slope is also dropping, the measurement of that height doesn't look too different. But as viewed from Larch and West Second, the building will seem a few feet shorter than the original proposal.
Because of the slope?
Because of how the height is measured, yeah. Because some of the elements on the rooftop are proposed to be pushed further west, where the bottom grade of the site is lower, and so that measurement of the maximum height sort of follows that grade down.
You're saying it will feel shorter than .3 feet? Is that right?
It will look like three feet shorter from Larch and Second, yes. It's really the measurement itself.
Okay. I'm just going to move on because I'm conscious of time. And that is, you also talked about minimizing rooftop features. And so in looking at that area in the report, I just wanted a bit of detail on what that meant. And so I was looking at page eight, where it talks about the amenity and the indoor amenity being relocated to the roof and there being some screening or landscaping. Is that what you meant when you made the comment minimizing rooftop features? Or does that mean that there's less, is it less outdoor access on the roof? Or what else?
So for example, it might mean where the original application proposed a trellis on sort of the east side of the building, transitioning that to the west side, so that fewer rooftop elements would be visible from the street.
Okay. But for the residents, would they have more or less outdoor space? Is there more space on the rooftop now dedicated to indoor space? I guess how much access do people have to outdoors? That's what I'm asking.
There is definitely quite a lot of outdoor space proposed with the recommendations on the rooftop, in addition to the indoor amenity room. And as well, the site has the really great abundant outdoor space in the treed sort of front yards.
Okay. And then the 10-foot setback, is that, would you describe, that's described in Appendix B that you had a reference? Would you describe that as sort of the most significant change that was made in response to public feedback, the 10-foot setback from the rear, and then to allow for sort of that space allowance, as well as for additional landscaping?
Yeah, certainly. So the building height sort of dropping was one of them, but the big piece there is pushing back from the lane, and really to help soften the transition to the neighboring properties.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful. I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hunter Counselor Frye.
Oh, thank you. Questions for the applicant, actually. Mr. Papa John, my ears perked up. You had me at pet-friendly. So I'm curious about some of the business decisions here, particularly on the landscaping and on the pet-friendly. And oftentimes, we hear from folks that they don't want, that pets cause damage, and that it's actually hard for people with pets to find homes.
I have two dogs, so we're partial, and we grew up with dogs. But we find, because it's so difficult for many people to find accommodation that accepts pets, we actually find many of those tenants much better tenants, and more caring of the surrounding buildings, and because they know they have a special place to be living with their pet.
Yeah, I agree with you, and I'm very happy to hear that acknowledged in a business model, because I've often thought that intuitively, that pet owners would make great, you know, they're more responsible, generally speaking, and...
Yeah, I think most people that have a pet are taking care of something, whether they have children or not, they're taking care of another animal, so...
Yeah, yeah. No, that's, and as you mentioned, the market dynamics of trying to find a place. So now on to the natural landscaping. Again, that's a pretty significant inclusion of mature trees, and obviously not an easy proposition. We know that, like, working around trees of that nature could be... So that's obviously a business decision that you made as well, or was that a design decision?
We think, you know, the natural and older vegetation is part of Vancouver and Kits, and if we can retain it, we worked hard with the architect team and the landscape architects to form the underground in a certain way, and that's why we had to push closer to the laneway and stuff, to accommodate those tree roots and them surviving.
And so lastly, now, given that this is a pilot, and for me, the big interest in how this pilot works is the deeper affordability and the sort of vacancy control component of it. And obviously, this hasn't been approved, you haven't built it, you don't know how it's all going to work out in the end. But do you, since we're talking, and this is a pilot, do you see ways that we could deepen that level of affordability? Are there tools that we might...
Well, I think it's the ratio between the market and the non-market. So, you know, we hear about density and heights and all these things. You need the extra density in the market units to pay for the non-market units, regardless of 20 or 30 percent. It needs to be balanced to be able to afford those. The other, I mean, the interesting thing with the MERP program is the rents are the same regardless of where they are in Vancouver. So this 950 studio at Second and Larch was the same price as the MERP studios on Renfrew Street. So they're actually deeper affordable, the ones on, in our project, in my opinion.
So Mr. Molnar, who was here just before, had previously bent my ear about speeding up the process and queuing together DP and RZ. Do you see any merits in those kind of...
I do. And then, I mean, the other thing is, we're at a point in time where we have three levels of government sort of agreeing on some things and ticking off the same boxes. We also have historically low interest rates, and we have cities that are prepared to address these affordability issues. If construction costs are increasing, I can tell you that right now, about 1% a month, I'm being told. So the longer these things take, the more risk there is to seeing them through to fruition.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Domino next. Sorry, Savanchi here, up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And questions to staff. I just wanted to follow up on the recommendations that staff made, which were in response to the panel, but also public feedback. Can you just walk through the key ones? I heard the change in the setback at the back, the height, the public amenities. Were there other key staff recommendations in terms of changes that you wanted to see in response to public feedback, as well as the urban design panel?
I mean, certainly, one of the other recommendations there is to even further increase the landscaping around the site. So knowing that there are already a number of trees to be retained on site, trying to find additional opportunities, and some of that being in the lane or elsewhere on the site was one of the big ones.
But I captured the other ones. Those are the big ones that you spoke to earlier.
Yeah, definitely minimizing the height and increasing that setback to the rear are the other two major ones, for sure.
Okay, great. And then, can you remind me, if this weren't going ahead or proposed as a MERP project, what could be built there now?
Yeah, good question. And I'll maybe look to my urban design colleagues to help respond to that one.
Thank you.
Yeah, and existing zoning is RT8. It's a typical duplex zone, which can typically build duplex on a small site, but on this larger site relatively, it's possible to develop to multiple dwellings, up to 10 strata units, and most likely in the form of a three-story rowhouse building. And the height is up to 35 feet, and the density is up to 0.75.
Okay. And you said strata? Could they be rental?
Yeah, and the current zoning is strata units.
Okay. And so there'd be no rental, and no below-market?
Yeah, that's the option to develop, but usually... Yeah, that's the option to a developer, but usually it's allowed to build strata.
Okay.
And I'll add something to the conditions about height and setback. According to the height, it is a response to the urban design panels, which is make efforts to reduce the parent heights. Actually, further than that, during the test fit, staff work with applicants, we actually reduce the actual height and perceived height both. And if you look at the sections, I don't know if you include the sections of this proposal, and the floor-to-floor height in the original proposal is more than 10 feet. So staff recommend the applicants to reduce the floor-to-floor height to more typical, which will reduce the primary of the building height by about three feet, which you can see, the building height below the rooftop actually reduced to three feet, but the numbers, 67 feet actually measured to the top rooftop amenity space, it's actually, you cannot see from a street view, the main building height you can see is the primary building massing for the first five stories, not the rooftop.
Okay.
It's about the building height. Another is the real setback. That's also a response to the urban design panel, is the impact to the units behind the lane. We know there is very dense trees retained in the front yard. The building actually pushed the same, the big front yard. So it is provide a relatively smaller real setbacks from the lane comparing to regular apartment building. So during the review, staff recommend to set back the buildings to a minimum 10 feet to allow a 10-foot, 10-foot landscape zone to buffer from this apartment building to the duplex across the lane. In this zone will be plant-layered landscape and large trees, which you probably can, you remember the slides, has the enhanced landscape along the lane. So, yeah, that's the first conditions.
That's helpful, thank you. And then I have one last question to the applicant, to Mr. Papajon.
Just 20 seconds.
Okay, thank you. I just want, I'm curious, do you think, speaking to the ratios, could you have done more sort of below-market rental with the current ratio, like more than 20%?
It's very difficult, given the land cost and the increase in construction costs. We're able to find a bit of a sweet spot here because of the lower interest rates, but we truly love the city and want to have this as a long-term asset for our family, so.
Very much.
We're taking a bit of a hit for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor DeGenova.
Thanks so much. I have a question for staff, and it's regarding pet-friendly rental units in this neighborhood. I understand that that's a need throughout the city, but specifically in this neighborhood. We've talked a lot about housing. I'm wondering if we can talk, if you might be able to answer my question about specifically in this neighborhood, you know, is there an entire rental building or rental project with this number of units that are pet-friendly?
I could try, but we, you know, the RTA sets out what landlords can and can't do around restrictions on pets and other things, but we don't have any data collected on how many rental units in, by neighborhood are or not pet-friendly in the rental market.
Okay.
Don't have the data.
But we know that there's a deficiency in that, or there's people with pets who are finding it more difficult than people without pets to find rental units? Is that correct?
Yeah, I'd say when we do our consultations in the community around every housing strategy, every housing project we do, one of the key things we hear back from households that are looking for lack rental housing in the city is always the difficulty of accessing rental housing when you have pets.
Okay, thank you. Also, hoping, Mr. Garrison, I'm assuming you may be answering this question, but it's about housing and looking at creative ways to increase family housing. Can you speak a little bit about how that's achieved in this specific application?
Yeah, certainly, it can be a challenge achieving family-sized units, particularly three-plus bedroom units in typical apartment building forms. You need corners essentially on buildings to be able to get those units in, in ways that access exterior walls, to have windows that open to them. So one of the things that's been frankly a debate for many years in Vancouver is whether we should look at enabling or allowing inboard bedrooms, particularly for third bedrooms, for either bedrooms or flex space for families. As we've done consultation with, in the community around our family housing guidelines, it is one of the things that we've discussed pretty widely in the community, and there are mixed views on it, although the need for third flex slash bedroom space is something that's come up a lot. So that is one of the things that we looked at in a sort of limited way, allowing consideration of through this pilot program. And so mainly focused on allowing the potential for a third bedroom to not share an exterior wall in limited circumstances when it wasn't possible to create a normal third bedroom. So that's one of the ways that we're looking at, and something we're having an ongoing conversation with the design community and the development industry about.
You know, I've brought several motions about inboard and broad light bedrooms, so I'm happy to hear that. Just to verify, this does have inboard bedroom, or inboard bedrooms, and I noted that in the policy specifically, is that correct?
Yeah, this project's proposing one bedroom, one unit that has a three-bedroom unit with an inboard bedroom. And again, that's to overcome some of the design challenges with achieving three bedrooms in the normal configuration.
And is my understanding that currently the city of Vancouver doesn't allow what would be considered traditionally as a den, because it could possibly be used as a bedroom, without any windows? Is that correct?
Hi, Yarda McNeil, Senior Res zoning Planner. That's correct. In Vancouver, bedrooms generally are rooms with windows. So when we classify a den that's enclosed within that, that's fine, but we won't count it as a bedroom.
Okay. So this may be a way for, it's a pilot right now, technically, is that fair to say?
I think that's correct, and I think Mr. Garrison answered that in a fulsome way.
Okay.
Explained that we're trying it out and will continue to consult with the development industry.
Okay. Looking forward to hearing the results of that, and thanks for answering my questions about clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boyle.
Thanks. I just have two questions. And the first one, I'm actually not sure if it's for staff or the developer, but maybe to the developer. I thought I heard that the building would be zero emission, and I'm curious to know if that means there's no natural gas being built into it?
Yes, so the, it has zero fossil fuel emissions, so no gas, no natural gas. There's electric.
Heating and heat pumps?
Yeah, that's basically it.
Okay. Great, okay. And then actually, I have one more question for you, which is, I'm curious, if you had been able to go to six stories on this, do you have a sense of how that would have, how many more moderate income units? Would that have been of interest?
Yeah, so we, when we first came in, we did talk about a six-story building, but then, of course, our very, very first open house, it was obviously obvious that that was going to be a real concern. But we, it would just be 20%. So if we could add another floor, we'd go from, you know, approximately 63 to 75. So it'd be 20% of that. So, you know, it could be potentially 15 or 16. So we could have another three or so units.
Okay.
Moderate, yeah.
That's all my questions, thanks.
Thanks very much. Counselor Hardwick.
My question is for staff. Neighborliness. Neighborliness is one of the criteria for determining the appropriateness of this rezoning and application of this new pilot project. We just saw and approved the first two of these MERP projects, and their neighborliness was not seen as a consideration. We had nobody show up from the neighborhood, and yet, here we are with significant turnout from the community. Furthermore, as we looked at the public consultation report, we saw a high level of interest in the community at various open houses. I'm really interested in hearing how you can really stand behind the statements around neighborliness here. So could you walk me through why you see this as appropriate through the lens of neighborliness and planning?
Thanks for the question. And yeah, I think the texture fit is a very important concern, and also is very important to us to review the projects. This project actually, as the developer says, is brought scale down from six-story to five-story. It is, it is not dramatically, from our point of view, changed the fuels of the neighborhood and the overdensified area. And the application also proposed a few positive design measures that help the development fit into the neighborhood context and also minimize the impact to the neighbors. First of all, we mentioned it retains 24 out of 25 major trees on-site. As you know, Kiznel has the major features of this landscape, this large trees in the front yard. So this retained trees actually maintain the features of the front yard, which is similar to other properties in this block phase. And also, it provides natural buffer between this rental apartment development and the surrounding smaller buildings. Secondly, it is the building itself, the massing, is shaped to transition to the lower buildings. As you can see, this is a five-story building, but the top floor is stepped back on all sides to create a four-story appearance. Also, alongside, along the lane, the massing is terraced down to one-story height.
So, I'm sorry, I have limited time for my questions.
Okay.
So the key thing I heard there was from your perspective, and we'll be hearing from the neighborhood about their perspective on neighborliness. Is there anything specific about height and massing that is consistent with this neighborhood?
Oh, okay, I just got into it, maybe I can get it quickly. Actually, it is terraced down the building height to be similar to the buildings around it. For example, on the southeast corner, it terraced down to the three-story height, which is similar height as the house due to the south. And it terraced down to four-story, which is just one story above, higher than the house on the west. And also, the lane, I just mentioned, is one story, it's the similar scale of the duplex across the lane. So from the height and massing, it is successfully bring down the building height, transition to the surrounding buildings. Of course, I want to mention a little bit, is the streetscape and the front yard, which is a very important features to maintain this neighborhood character. It's retained tree and also the landscape buffer along the lane, which really help to create a very neighborhood residential characters for these projects as well.
I'll add some more. And if I could add some more to that question in a more general sense?
About 20 seconds.
Okay. I think what's important to understand is that the policy allows consideration of greater height and density. That is what the policy is actually asking us and council to consider. As such, I think we have to be explicit and state that the impact of this building on the immediate neighbors is not going to be the same as a three-story set of rowhouses. I think that's kind of intuitively clear for all of us, we all understand that. However, in terms of whether or not staff feel that the extra negative impact on the immediate neighbors is unduly done in a way that is really not fair. Our assessment is that there are a lot of different other parts of other neighborhoods where that kind of situation between a duplex looking, or a house looking across the lane at a five or six-story building does exist quite a bit. And we have a lot of policies that actually allow that as well.
Thanks very much. Yep, Counselor DeGenova.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, points at a, I might get up and move them down there later, as I had to do. But I just, I'd heard that the neighborhood was here tonight in a statement in the question, and I think it's important to note that although every voice in the neighborhood's important, that there are some people from the neighborhood that might not be able to be here tonight because they're working or for childcare issues or accessibility issues. So I just wanted, I wanted to ask that when people speak about the people here, they represent part of the neighborhood or some of the neighborhood? But because it is a quasi-traditional hearing, I thought that might be important.
Sure.
Hoping that you might note that later on. Thanks.
And another point of information, Mr. Mayor, will it be possible for us to have a second round of questions to staff?
We, yes, to staff indeed, but this is the only time we can ask applicant questions. Thanks. Counselor Weep.
Yes, mine's on slide 11. It shows the tiny library and bench, but I don't see that on any other diagram we have. Is that something that's in the new proposed version that we just don't see in anything else?
Thank you for the question. Let me just see this here. So you're referring to the bench and the library at the corner here?
Yeah, not this slide, it's slide, yeah, slide 11.
Yeah, yeah, so there is currently a bench and a library on the site. Sure, if you'd like to.
Actually, Counselor Reed.
The church took it with them.
Okay. But, so in the picture, no, yeah, so if you zoom in.
Yeah, there was a mini library there, like a boring one.
Is that library gone as well?
The church took it.
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay. Are you looking to replace them?
We'll definitely look at it.
As well, I guess we'll follow-up question. The little community children's play area that played in as a game?
Yes.
Is that something you've looked at retaining along with the stone stacked?
I think there's some, I'll let the architect, the landscape architect, talk about that. There's some play area and urban ag on the roof and some plots around the property.
Yeah, so there's considerable amount of play area and urban agricultural plots on the roof. We have a green roof, we have an amenity space that opens up onto that. And we looked initially at potentially having it in the same place as the daycare has at the moment, but it's very dark down there, and we are, from city staff recommendations, trying to actually integrate some of the unit's front doors through that path. So we might be having a few paths going through there. So it wouldn't make sense to have the daycare there, so.
But the stacked stone will be retained?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Second one to staff, was there a letter of historical significance done on the project?
There's no SOS, significant of a statement prepared for this project. It's at an early stage, heritage staff review the projects, there, this is not registered heritage, and also, there is no identified need and community interest to retain this particular existing structure. And so there's no further review and SOS prepared for this project.
Okay, thank you very much. And final question on, you talked about the opportunity of this guy to be rowhouses or the four-story that are the project we're looking at right now. In terms of accessibility, we know that there are a lot of seniors continuing to be a larger portion of the population significantly in this area. Is there more accessibility with a project like this than if we had gone to a rowhouse?
A rowhouse typology typically involves a unit that is entered at the ground story, and it has two more stories above, and that's the whole unit. You would have the living room and the kitchen on the ground floor, bedrooms above that accessible via stairs, and then maybe another set of bedrooms above that accessible via stairs. What's interesting about an apartment typology such as this is that every single dwelling unit is accessed, can be accessed by an elevator, and every single dwelling unit is a one-floor dwelling unit. There are no stairs in any of these dwelling units to access one part of the dwelling to another part of it. So it's a lot more accessible. So it's a lot more accessible for anybody who has mobility challenges.
Thank you. All the questions. You, Councilor Carr.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to just follow up on a couple of questions that other councillors have raised, and one of them is around neighborliness and the fit within the neighborhood. I noticed that the Urban Design Panel in Appendix D has a fair number of comments about that. And I wonder if you could tell me how those have been addressed specifically, I think, around the impact on the lane? I think you've started to say those, but just have you addressed all those in conditions of approval in terms of the concerns raised by the Urban Design Panel?
It's better to look at from the graphs. And the name, I don't, there, there we go. Yeah, yeah, it is a major comment from UDP. And we, the first condition from staff, we put a lot of efforts to trying to improve this name interface and minimize the impact to the neighbors. First of all is we asking setback 10 feet for the landscape buffer. As you can see from the slides, the buildings setback 10 feet allowed space for the larger trees and layered landscape. Second, we do have another suggestion for the landscape screen on the roof deck, on the upper floors and on the rooftop, which will help to reduce the overlook and the noise impact to the neighbors as well. And the third is we also looking for some treatment for the balcony, which actually some private balconies also generate activities may cause noise and overlook issue. We're looking for some translucent materials for the guardrails will help that too. And so all those design measures we recommend in Appendix D that will develop into the details at DP stage and could be further resolved this issue.
Great. Okay, thank you. I appreciate those comments. And did I hear you say originally at the beginning in your introduction that because of the height of the trees that are being retained along West Second, that the visibility of the building is going to be blocked by the trees? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
I speed a little bit, maybe I'll pass to landscape staff to talk about details. Yeah, the tree is very tall and very dense. And the image, you can see, I'm sure the image, it's, yeah, it's blocked the facade entirely, almost.
Okay.
Yeah. And do you want to know details about the tree species or something?
No, no, I think that that image says it, and you've said it verbally. The second area that I'm interested in is I noticed that staff has met with, had a neighborhood group meeting, and one of our appendices, actually it's Appendix D, page nine to 11, has a summary of the meeting. There's lots of concerns that were raised by the neighborhood groups. I wonder if you could just highlight some of the ways in which the conditions of approval have been, or either that or the project itself been altered in its form of this application. I have addressed those concerns raised by the residents. I mean, some of them I understand might be difficult, like the church space and community amenities part, or, you know, but there's issues around street parking and, yeah, there's some other that haven't been paid attention to yet.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I'll note that this application, it is exceeding the number of parking spaces that are required under the parking bylaw. And I know that was a theme that we heard throughout the process, that people were interested in that. In addition, I would just emphasize some of the pieces that did come up a little bit earlier around the neighborliness and the quality of the building and the character and how that sort of blends in with the neighborhood. And some of the things that we heard through those comments, as well as through the Urban Design Panel, we're looking at really closely some of those details of the building and looking at other buildings in the area to see if there were specific architectural elements that could apply to a larger apartment building sort of form rather than a smaller duplex form that would bring those consistent elements in. And as my colleague mentioned, with the really great benefit of those trees in the front yard, that was one aspect of the project that we certainly wanted to keep carrying forward and knowing that would help with the neighborliness and the quality of the building.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
It's a bye.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So, yeah, I mean, a number of my questions have been asked, but I did want to pick up on the question around parking. And in the comments received at the open houses around, there seems to be some tension between traffic in the lane for it being a narrow lane and then park, street parking. And maybe this is for the applicant. Was there, what was the original number of parking spaces in the application?
So, yes, original application, I think we were around the 37 number.
That's the minimum.
Our minimum is, actually, our minimum is 33.
Okay.
And then, and then we brought that up to 56 because of residents' concern. Also, there was a concern about the lane being very narrow at that point, and we heard that also it was a big concern. And so with staff, we've moved back the plant in and the building further away from the lane to give, create a wider lane because there was problems with the garbage trucks getting caught up and down that.
Okay. Can I just get confirmation from staff, the parking minimum under this bylaw? Because it says in the report 37.
You're right, sorry. It is 37.
It is, okay.
Sorry, 33 of them were normal, and then the others were accessible.
So, and you're putting in 57?
Yes, so total 57, yeah, that's right. Quite a large amount over.
Yeah, so, right, okay. Understood. Thank you. And you, you don't have any concern? Okay, no, I won't go in there. I'm running out of time. Okay, trees. I want, I think it's great that we've been able to maintain as many trees as we can. We know, we hear about that on lots of different topics here in council. I am concerned by that picture, the density of retaining those trees as it relates to the shadowing on the building. I mean, especially if some of these units are going to have inboard rooms. I'm just curious if we have any concerns from the, maybe it's Urban Design Panel, that any concerns around that level or that amount of dense trees that could impact the livability of the actual building in terms of light coming in?
Yeah, that's to the north side of the building. So it is impacting a little bit about the daylights, but that's not the concern from the UDP. When UDP mentioned reconsidering the tree retention, as I remember the member panel says, the tree retained in the front yard constrained the location of the building, which pushed the building to the back of the site. That's they triggered them to think maybe reconsidering of the tree, not the worry about the lights to the unit itself.
Yeah, I think from the photo, it looks a little tricky to see how much space is actually between the trees and the building.
Yeah.
My final question is around the church itself. And do we know, what do we know about why the church sold to the builder?
So I think that the church congregation was down as little as 40 at one point, and they didn't have enough of a population to have a full-time priest. So they have, they had a sister church, which they ended up choosing over this site just because of the amount of people using it. So it was, that was really the main reason. And so the church decided to sell one of the sites, and that was the site that came up.
I see. Okay.
For lack of use.
Okay. And so then, quick follow-up is in the public feedback around amenity space and requesting that amenity space be sort of accommodated in the new construction to accommodate for what would be not there anymore because of the church being taken away. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, well, you know, since, quite recently, the Kit's House has had additional sort of rooms added to it and has been redeveloped.
You mean Kit's Neighborhood House?
Kit's Neighborhood House, yeah. So I think for, I live in this neighborhood, so I know that that's where a lot of the kids have events and functions and everything go. And we never really went to any events in this church. I know that there was some events going on, but that's really in the neighborhood, that's where it really goes. So I think there's adequate amenity there. We do have a private amenity space, but that's for the residents only.
Thanks, we're at five minutes.
Thank you.
Councilor Swanson?
So I heard, I think I heard the number 4,000 being tossed around for a rent. Is that what the rents are going to be?
Thank you for the question. So the application, when it was received, they were proposing rents in order to meet the DCL waiver at the time. They did propose rents that were up to $4,000 for the market three-bedroom units. When council approved the changes to the DCL waiver a couple of weeks ago, they changed the criteria for meeting that waiver to mean now this application meets the waiver by providing the 20% of floor area for moderate rental units. And as such, they, the applicant no longer needs to adhere to the proposed rents that they had. The current market rents in Kitsellano are lower than that $4,000 that they were proposing. So the applicant would leave it up to the market to decide what those market rents would be.
So because of the change that was passed a few days ago, the rents that have to be adhered to are lower, higher, nonexistent?
The proposed moderate income rents are the same. But the market rents, there is no longer a requirement to meet the DCL waiver.
So you get a DCL waiver at any rate, at any rent, so long as you have the MRP units for 30 to 80, so.
That's per council direction, yes.
Yeah, okay. Do you guys have any idea what the rents ballpark, what the rents are like in the surrounding basement suites in the neighborhood?
Yeah, I have an example of a few different rents in the neighborhood. So, sorry, I can't quite see these myself. If you take a look at the slide, you could see some examples of the existing sort of average rents in the area, and that's in Kitsellano, as well as the rents under the DCL bylaw when this application was submitted. I'll note a nuance there with the DCL bylaw. The maximum average rents were sort of balanced out between the moderate income units as well as their proposed rents. So that's where any of that discrepancy between the higher proposed market rents comes in.
So what I'm asking is, like, say there's an apartment building kitty-corner from where this is going to be. Do you have any idea what the rents are in there now? Do you have any idea what the rents would be in the, you know, there's lots of houses around there that have basement suites? I'm not talking about the new rent, like if you were renting the place for the first time.
We're just looking up the numbers for you. We have the data, but we just need to look it up and get back to you.
Okay, good. So another question, is there going to be a rich door and a poor door?
No. So this application proposes one main entry door. There are a number of units that have their own access directly to the street, but there are no separate doors. The moderate income units aren't going to be treated any differently than the market rental units.
So the DCL waiver is equal to about $100,000 per low-income unit? Do you know what the city typically gives to a nonprofit when they're trying to increase affordability? Is it that much?
It ranges depending on the method that we use to do it. There's a different cost if we secure a building through an inclusionary program versus investing city land at a nominal rate, which could be 150 or 200,000 dollars per unit, depending on the density we achieve. And the grant program that we're looking at right now is looking at about 75,000 a unit maximum, but I think.
With chip?
Yeah. What we need to understand about the way that these buildings perform financially is that financial incentives, whether they be density, whether they be development cost levy waivers, can't be isolated to just the 20% of floor area that's at the affordable rates. Because the way that you achieve the affordability in those units is by the building functioning as a financial whole overall, 100% of the units. We wouldn't, we wouldn't break it down as the per-unit DCL waiver just for those units because we have to look at the financial picture of the building as a whole, or it doesn't get delivered.
And you're trying to get me those other rents?
We're just at the five minutes now, Councilor Swanson, so we'll have to.
Yes. We might come back later.
Thank you. Councilor Kirby Young?
I just have a quick point of privilege. I'm just wondering if staff could direct me as to where I can find that slide, because it's not contained in the presentation itself. So I'm just wondering where that would be available, the one that's on the screen right now.
Sure, we'll have somebody send it to you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Councilor Frye?
Yeah, I'm.
Just a minute left.
How do I have just a minute left? I don't think I spoke, do I?
You've not spoken this round? That's what my clock says.
Okay, sure. Sure enough. I'm just curious, actually, about how that monthly cost of ownership on a three-bed was calculated. I'm quickly crunching the numbers myself, and that's even at 6% interest rate, and one and a half million on a 30-year mortgage, that's still, doesn't even come to 9,000 a month. Just curious how that math works.
Perhaps staff could work on that instead of you?
Sure, yeah.
Because your clock is ticking down here.
Yep, no, that's no problem then. It just jumped out at me as I was looking at this chart.
There is an opportunity to talk to staff after we hear from the public. So perhaps those two questions we could get answers to. Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Hardwick. You've, you're out of time.
Yes, I'm wondering about another round of questions.
Yeah, not at this point. We're going to hear from the public. You can ask questions to staff after the public have spoken.
Hopefully, I'll be able to hold out that long.
Okay, I imagine you might have another crack at it another day. So, okay. Thanks very much. So that's it for questions to staff and the applicant at this point. Want to have information, Councilor DeGenova?
I just wanted to make sure, are we scheduled till 10:00 PM tonight? I see many speakers on the list, so I just wanted to check in with you so that we didn't disappoint speakers. Is there?
Moving right to speakers right now?
No, I understand. I'm just, I just was wondering if maybe council wanted to discuss now, so if there were any speakers here who were later on the list, who expected to speak tonight, that we might not get to all of them tonight?
Are you moving a motion, or are you?
I'm just wondering if the clerk had provided any input, as they sometimes do, as to if they felt that we may need another day or night.
Yep, I said that at the beginning of the meeting.
I know.
If we don't hear from speakers.
Everyone wasn't in the chamber, so I thought it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
If we don't hear from speakers tonight, we'd continue on Tuesday, September, December 17th at 6:00 PM. We do have 65 speakers on the list, so I will do my best. But with five minutes apiece, it will take a while. And again, if we don't get through speakers this evening, we would come back December 17th at 6:00 PM. Councilor Dominado, do you have a question?
Just wondering if at this time, we might entertain a motion to extend to 11 to hear speakers?
You're, you can move a motion if you like.
I'd like to move that motion.
Okay. Do we have a seconder for that motion? Councilor Boyle, thanks very much. So the motion, one more time, is?
To extend the meeting to 11 to hear speakers. So that people, that's the window of time we have to.
And just to confirm with the clerk, that would require a two-thirds vote in order to pass? Okay, thanks very much. So all in favor of extending to 11? All in favor of extending to 11? Those opposed? One, two, three. So let's see, three out of, maybe the clerk can help me with the math. I think that just passes. Right, so we're going to extend to 11 o'clock. Thank you very much. And with that, point of personal privilege, Councilor Hardwick.
I understand if people are going to stay to 11. I'm just feeling health-wise that that's not going to be possible for me. So I just want to ensure that I can watch the video that I'll miss this evening.
Yep, we do, we have made the decision to stay till 11. We have to maintain quorum in order to hear the speakers officially, but you can review what sections you miss on video, which the clerks will send you, so you can be fully informed when you vote. Okay, thank you. Point of privilege, Councilor Swanson?
Ditto to Councilor Hardwick.
Right, so the only danger is if we run out of quorum, then the meeting just stops. So regardless of the motion that's passed, so just let you know that. Okay? Okay, so thanks very much. First on the list, we have Anne Rylander. All right, so just to refresh people's memories, right, we're supposed to talk directly to this project, state whether you're in support or opposed, and have up to five minutes. You may have questions from council. Thanks for coming, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councillors. My name is Anne Rylander, and this evening I am speaking as a resident of our neighborhood, our RT8-zoned multifamily neighborhood, and as a mother and grandmother. I'm going to be speaking from the perspective of real people and real families. My husband and I have lived for 14 years in a small town home at First and Larch Street. So we're very close to this development, just north of it. My husband's and my physician on the developer's application to spot rezone the property at Second and Larch Street and build the proposed pilot project is no. Before I give my rationale, I'd like to remind you that this particular spot rezoning application is the first of its kind in the city of Vancouver, as it is right in the middle of a quiet residential neighborhood on a quiet residential street. The decision of whether to approve this project will set a precedent in the city of Vancouver for all Vancouver neighborhoods. Therefore, this is an extremely important public hearing and an extremely important We hear and understand, Mr. Mayor and councillors, that your goal is to provide much more affordable, below-market rental accommodation in the city of Vancouver. We totally support this concept and support this goal in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood in Kits, as I mentioned, is zoned RT8, multiple-family zoning, duplex zoning. And our neighborhood, zoned this way, is a majorly, is right now as we speak, is a majorly successful example of a neighborhood already providing a huge amount of affordable multi-unit rentals in older homes. But this is being done while still maintaining the character of the homes. If we lose that in Vancouver, we lose the character of our city. This past June, my husband and I spent four weeks petitioning just our own little, small part of the neighborhood on First and York, between Larch and Trafalgar Streets. And we spoke with all of our neighbors. Well, we might have missed half a dozen. We saw example after example of owners who, right now as we speak, are being extremely creative and resourceful in providing very, very dense, affordable rental housing. And I can't go into the examples, but they're just, you literally would not believe what people are doing to accommodate below-market, affordable rental housing.
Just 30 seconds left.
All right. Why we are opposed to this pilot project as it stands, the quantity of units, 13 out of 63 units, is not a significant number. And there are 50 units, as has been discussed, above. And they are going to be about, the proposed rents are above the average for rental apartments in--
We're going to have to end it there, because we're at five minutes. So thank you very much.
May I just make my appeal?
We have a lot of people to get through. You're 5:20, so that's--
My take-home message--
I'm going to have to cut you there, ma'am, because we're well over now at 5:30.
Okay.
But you can please, you can send it by email, any additional comments you have. I don't imagine we'll be finished this this evening, so we'll have plenty of time to read any additional comments you might have.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
And I see no questions on the queue for you. Erin Ryan. Thanks very much for coming in. Up to five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Erin Ryan. I live in a rental apartment on Fourth and Stevens, only a few blocks away from this proposal, and I've lived in this current apartment for five years. I'm here to speak in support of this development. I'm 28 years old. I'm currently a master's student at UBC studying applied animal biology and working part-time at a job I've held for five years. I've lived in Kitsellano for 10 years and been a frequent visitor since my childhood. I used to visit the iconic NOM restaurant with my mom and sisters when I was a kid, and now I live across the street and enjoy the $5.95 breakfast on weekdays with my husband. Kitsellano was my home. I first lived away from my parents here. I went to university here. I fell in love. I got married. I landed my dream job, helping animals. We started a family by adopting and raising two beautiful rescue cats. I'm renting, but I've made my home here, and I want to stay. But I can't afford to live here unless projects like this move forward. Even with a two-income household, me at my dream job at a nonprofit, and my husband in tech, we still can't afford to buy an apartment in Vancouver. And we certainly can't afford to rent anywhere else with the lack of pet-friendly housing. And I'd like to comment on something that the applicant and Counselor Frye actually brought up earlier. In the 10 years that I've been here, I have lived in three different rental units with my cats. And part of why I've only lived in three is because I stay longer. I'm willing to pay more money than even other undergrads to accommodate my whole family. And I can certainly speak to the fear of being able to find housing for the whole family. And in the 10 years that I've rented, I have never lived in a pet-friendly building. I have only ever been an exception to the rules. I know there's opposition to this project, and that hurts me, because what I hear in that opposition is that people like me aren't welcome to call Kitsellano home. I hope you'll agree with me that the future of this neighborhood is helping moderate-income families, and I hope you'll help me find a home for me and my whole family. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening. There are no questions for you, but thanks for your input. Peter Sanderson. Thanks very much. I'll just repeat, up to five minutes.
I have a board here, if that's all right.
Okay.
My name is Peter Sanderson. I'm a part of a group of Kitsellano residents who are opposed to this rezoning application. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. We ask that you judge this rezoning application in its own unique context and base your decision on the specific circumstances of this individual case. Take a good look at this building. The houses on this, on this slide are in scale on Third Avenue, drawn to scale. The, this building is so outsized on its lot that it's actually larger, bigger, taller, and has more density than is permitted in the apartment zoning to the east of Larch or on the main arterial of Fourth Avenue. If built here, it would sit on only three standard house lots, yet it contains 63 apartment units with 150 or more residents. The proposed floor square footage is denser even than the 11-story, 12-story tower blocks to the east, which sit on much larger sites with tennis courts and swimming pools. This building at 65 feet high dwarfs the surrounding houses and apartments, blocks light and views, and invades privacy. This site is on the edge of a ridge, and the upper stories will have extensive views in all directions, commanding high rents that will push the average rents in this neighborhood upwards from their currently moderate rates. This proposal has 56 underground parking stalls exiting onto what is a narrow lane. This lane with private garages leading off it, and children and dogs accessing it, cannot handle more traffic. If this project goes ahead, the garage exit must be angled sharply towards Larch Street, directing the extra vehicles up and not down the narrow portion of the lane. This is an important safety issue. The architects have promoted tree retention and landscaping, yet the building and underground excavation are spread so wide on the lot that they crowd the existing trees on three sides. Why not step the building back with an inset portion around the two large fir trees that are only two meters away from the new building, and their branches extend out six meters? This would provide more natural light to those north-facing windows, and at the same time, add more interest to the shape of the building. The architects wrongly identify the trees on the west property line as mountain ash. They are Leyland cypress, and encroaching on these trees, as is proposed, will damage their roots and limit their life. No one can call this a sensitive design. If this is to become a transition block, as suggested by the architects, then this development should step down in density from the RM4, not up. More density is not a transition. The development should have no more than four stories and should be on a smaller footprint. You should stipulate that more effort be made to fit into the neighborhood context. I ask that you refuse this application in its present form of a pilot program, and instead insist on a truly contextual residential design. May I also remind you, Mr. Mayor and Councilor DeGenova, not to participate in the debate, nor to vote on the recommendations or draft bylaw due to an apprehended conflict of interest as per a letter sent to you by my neighbor. Thank you.
Sure, thank you very much. I'd like to remind you and other folks that we're talking about this specific application. There is a process for the matter which you mentioned at the end of your presentation, and there are other channels, but this is not the place for that discussion. So, thank you. You do have a question from Counselor DeGenova.
Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor, because there has been an accusation. I would like to say that it's my understanding, considering I'm very, very careful, and history will show that I am very careful about accusing myself if and when in a possible situation of conflict of interest, and I understand that I am not in a conflict of interest after having sought out legal advice. So I did want to state that for the record. That being said, I did want to ask you a question. If you don't want to answer my question, you don't have to, but in listening carefully to what you were saying, you said that this would bring rents in the neighborhood up. Were you speaking specifically for unit-to-unit, so like a three-bedroom unit in the neighborhood right now, in a newer building or in a building of comparable, comparable age, and for a unit of comparable size? You would think that this building would bring units up in price?
Well, when prices for rents are gauged, they usually look at all the neighboring units of the same similar size. I don't know whether they include the view in their pricing, but these units will definitely be high-market rent because of the views. And I think that will tend to push up the rents around when people are comparing.
Okay, and are there any comparable? You just also said in your presentation that there aren't any comparable units or projects like this in the area, and that was one of the reasons you didn't think it was appropriate. That's what I heard. So my question for you is, how could that be if there aren't any like this in the area?
Well, there are, there are many like this, not new, but--
Okay. So there are many like this in the area?
There are many rental units.
Many rental projects.
I don't know about three bedrooms.
Okay, but are there many rental projects like this in the--
No, in the houses, within the houses.
Within the houses? Okay, I'm going, I will ask our staff later if a three-bedroom unit in a home in Kitsellano would be comparable to the prices we'd see here. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
I have a two-bedroom unit in my house.
Okay.
It's $2,300 a month.
But to clarify, I, what I, I'm just asking you to clarify. What I heard you say was for comparable units, so do you feel that there are other projects like this in the neighborhood?
There's nothing as high or as big as this.
Okay, so there isn't anything comparable then, to compare the rents to?
Rents are rents, and people compare them.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Frye, up to five minutes.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is more of a point of information, I guess, with all due respect to Mr. Sanderson's comments towards the end. You mentioned that there will be a time to address this. I have reviewed the corporate policy, and notwithstanding Section 6.1.2 about lawful contributions and gifts and personal benefits, there are sections in 4.2 and 1.1 that do talk about appearances. And I think that, given Mr. Sanderson's comments, and that I imagine we may be hearing more of that, I'm wondering when, you mentioned there'll be a time to discuss this. I'm wondering when that might be.
Yep, just a second. We have a point of information to deal with. We can have staff provide you with that information, Counselor Frye. As you know, there is a code of conduct process that's followed when there is a complaint or allegation of particular nature. That's the process that it follows. This process, the public hearing, is regarding the actual project at hand, but I can have staff send you that information if you'd like clarification.
Well, I was speaking more for the benefit of the speakers and when they might get that information.
Yeah, well, there's, you know, there is a code of conduct that folks can look at online, and they can decipher this, but for your information, we're happy to send that to you.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor DeGenova.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, although I can't see you behind the pincetta. I, I understand very clearly, as it was a tool that was used improperly in the previous council term, that accusing someone, another, one council member accusing another or several council members of a conflict of interest is also serious. And if someone were to do that, that in our procedure bylaw, it clearly states that it is upon each council member to verify that for themselves and declare that and decide that. Is that the case? Can you verify that for me? Because I was a bit concerned, in a quasi-judicial body right now, that it seemed to me, seemed to me, that perhaps there was an accusation there.
Yes, I would say that actually both these conversations are improper, as well as the question from the speaker. There is a code of conduct process that is public, and people can follow through it. And we can provide that information to you if you like, Counselor Frye, but at this point, we're, through this process, we're deliberating on this particular unit, not, and not talking about, you know, people's eligibility to vote or not. That is covered under the code of conduct. And if there are complaints, either from folks that are not, you know, finding the discussion appropriate or on your behalf, there is a code of conduct, that process to be followed, and we've followed it a couple of times here already on council, but on the floor, council in a public hearing is not the place to raise those issues. Thanks. Okay, thanks. There's no more questions for you, so that's fine. Thank you very much. On to Janet Buckle. Thanks for coming in. Up to-- Thanks for coming in. Up to five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. I'm Janet Buckle, and I live on West Third Avenue behind the proposed development. It affects me directly, and I strongly oppose it. My husband and I have been in the house since 1977. We created a rental suite in 1987 that's still occupied by the original tenants. Over the years, we've done renovations to accommodate our changing needs. The renovations have involved approval by Board of Variants and always had to consider the neighbours' privacy and neighbourhood design. Now, this oversized building is being plonked directly at the back of my house without any consideration of the neighbours' or streetscape at all. It's too tall and too crowded. It takes away my right to quiet enjoyment and reasonable privacy. It will tower over my house and has an unobstructed view directly into it. The entrance to the parking is a hazard. It in no way deals with the narrowness of the lane. I've raised two boys, now adults, in this house, and I'm only too aware of the problems of affordability and livability in Vancouver. I'm also aware that property values are in the stratosphere. However, upzoning only aggravates the problem. Land is sold per buildable square foot. As soon as the land is upzoned, it becomes more expensive. As soon as the land becomes more expensive, rents rise, and this leads to gentrification. A classic definition of spot zoning is the process of singling out a parcel of land for a use totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of other owners. This proposal fits that definition. There is a disproportionate cost to the community in lost amenities and the complete lack of sensitivity to the surrounding area in return for a measly 13 below-market rentals, especially considering that the quality of those particular rentals is substandard. Spot zoning should be disallowed in favour of a comprehensive plan, a public process that shows there is significant community benefit. The public benefit should be consistent with the overall plan that is to be established in the citywide planning process. To make a preemptive decision on the issue of this building defeats the purpose of the citywide planning process and is a dishonest political manoeuvre. Kitsellano is an example of good planning created in collaboration with the community, multi-family zoning that provides density and affordable rental accommodation. It's an example for other neighbourhood development in the city. The solution is not one-size-fits-all. If you make decisions without a clear policy, you risk losing public confidence and make decisions that have negative long-term consequences. This pilot programme may be conceptually valid. However, this proposal is not because it does not meet its own guidelines. As per the Urban Design Panel, the development does not fit in the neighbourhood. It does not fit into the lot. It's a square peg in a round hole. It's ill-conceived. An alternative vision for the site would be a three-story structure on Larch Street, four stories from the lane, containing supportive housing with a mix of rentals that would allow a modest increase in density, retention of the much-needed community daycare and playground, a smaller building with more affordable rentals. I will conclude by saying I was very happy to hear of the exciting plans of the Squamish Nation to build 6,000 homes, 90% of which will be rental, in Kitsellano. This announcement changes the landscape considerably and makes an even more compelling case for the rezoning of 1805 Larch Street to be put on hold and become part of the citywide plan. Thank you.
Thank you. You have some questions. Councillor Swanson.
Yeah, just one question, which you totally don't have to answer. I wonder if you'd mind saying what the rent is in your suite that you said you had?
Yeah, it's a two-bedroom, two-bathroom. It's $1,300 square feet, sorry, $1,100 square feet, and it's $2,300.
Thank you.
Councillor Boyle.
Hi, thanks for coming. I'm wondering, I've heard from you and others an alternative vision that would have the building be smaller with more affordable units and maybe a childcare space, which clearly the market wouldn't build. So I'm curious if you think there would be interest in additional tax of some sort that would fund that kind of project publicly, since we're not going to see it built by the market?
I believe that it can be done with political will on all three levels of government. If it needs to be done, you can do it, if you want to.
Publicly by, like, because I guess what we wrestle with is this is what the market will build?
Yeah, well, I don't know the details of how you handle the money in the city, but you're the politicians, and if you have the will.
That's true. Thanks.
That's it for questions. Thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in tonight. Up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Christos Dikakos, senior Canadian artist, past recipient of the Mayor's Visual Arts Awards, and more important, a 50-year resident of 2555 West Third Avenue, halfway down a block of the proposed 1805 Street rezoning application, of which I oppose. The moderate rental project proposals, this one is not in the right location, as the former, which were unanimously passed tonight. History seems to repeat itself when housing crunch panics occur, as it did back in 1974, when an entire West Third 2,400 block of mostly working-class homes and small apartments were demolished for a high-rise condominium. Since that time, the west side of Larch Street, of which 1805 exists, was made an RT8 to stop high buildings, as this 1805 five-to-six-story outsized and high-density rental building, which is also not on a main arterial. All the previous that were seen today were all on main arterial thoroughfares. The 1805 moderate rental proposal is using discretionary CD1 spot zoning, which I believe is the antithesis of an all-inclusive good planning process, especially when the planning department becomes an agency working with the rental development industry to provide over $1 million with the free permits, levies, and charges, with high SFR bonuses producing too high and too bulky a structure within a three-city lot size where the present church is located. This proposal, which is a pilot programme, is in fact a trial experiment. I believe a Trojan horse creating a bad precedence to the rest of this Kitsellano multifamily neighbourhoods. I am for rentals in my Kitsellano neighbourhood. My family's West Third duplex home is currently going through a six-month extensive renovation of retrofits and up-to-date city-required code changes. We are also constructing two new rental ground-floor basement suites with fire sprinkler protection and all the necessary new code requirements. Many of our heritage Kits homes do indeed provide such affordable rental accommodation. I notice that being in an RT8 zone, I do not qualify for all those city relaxation of permits and fees, as does Jamison or the rental construction industry under this particular pilot project, which, incidentally, most of you had previously not voted for MIRHPP, because you were not here to really seriously consider the merits or debate a policy made by a past vision administration. In the last election, I voted for Green, NPA, and Ms Watson, where you collectively agreed to rezone Vancouver for the public good based on the citywide plan code-developed with residents to include the missing middle housing with a range of neighbourhood-compatible, social-to-affordable housing forms. I, as many others here, would like that opportunity to be part of a good, comprehensive housing plan and to see the end of CD1 spot zoning, which is the antithesis of good civic planning for the greater good. This project is too high, too bulky, Soviet-style architectural rental proposal in looks, and I would like to see it go back to the planning to reduce it from its five-to-six stories to a four-story building, more than the three feet of reduction that the planners offered here today. Of the 13 below-market rentals provided in this plan, they appear to be located in the subterranean floors. Three are on the uppermost parking level. The rest are on the first floor, which is partially below-grade.
Just 15 seconds.
Because of the hill, creating a class stratification model of upstairs-downstairs economic scenarios and precedents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You don't have any questions? I appreciate you coming in this evening. Councillor Carr.
Yes, Mr Mayor, the speaker did at one point talk about staff working with the development industry in a rather negative light. And I'm wondering if you just would caution the speakers to not in any way impugn the motivations or the work of staff in terms of implementing the policies that we have passed as council?
Thank you, Councillor Carr. I did listen very carefully to that section of the information. I thought it was more the policy than the individual planner, so I didn't really see that as, that was my interpretation anyway, and that's why I didn't stop it. But thank you for bringing that to my attention. Judith Osborne. Thanks for coming in. Up to five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Judy Osborne, and I'm here to speak against the 1805 Larch Street rezoning proposal. I've lived at 1820 Trafalgar Street for close to 30 years, one block west of the 1805 Larch Street development site. This area of Kitsellano is my community. This is where I belong. It has one of the healthiest mixes of community members in the city, low, middle, and high income, and particularly a healthy mix of rental housing and home ownership. There are young people, seniors, students, immigrants, and families in older homes, many that have been transformed into sustainable, affordable, multi-unit rentals. I ask you to consider, what is a city without community? A community is a living entity, growing entity, which is nurtured by its members. Without community, we become isolated. We are left without the invaluable connection to our neighbours, and our very lives depend on that connection. In my community, we have built not only a block watch programme, but an emergency preparedness programme, where we are able to identify and care for those who need help in case of disaster. We see each other, we speak to each other, we help each other. The St Mark's Church has been part of our community since 1907, first as a mission, and then in various forms, a church and a space where people who live here had a place to gather, to meet, to sing and dance, to help one another and provide shelter for those who had none. Do you know that over 200 members of St Mark's congregation over the years, from 1937, have had their ashes interred in the memorial garden on the site? They had to be removed when the church was sold and interred far away from where these parishioners wanted to have their final resting place. When St Mark's was sold to the developer, this community, my community, was a loser. We lost our community's cornerstone, a preschool, a summer, a children's summer acting camp, a playground, a soup kitchen, a space for boy scouts and girl guides, which had been there for over 58 years, a meeting space for the support group Al-Anon, rehearsal and performance space for musicians, actors, and artists, meditation, Tai Chi, and yoga classes, a venue for public lectures, a safe place for people to practise their faith, a sanctuary for refugees, and a meeting place for seniors and neighbourhood groups, to name a few. This proposal gives nothing back to our community, and it makes no allowance for our loss, our loss of our historic community amenities. The church offered the only community meeting space north of Fourth Avenue in Kitsellano, from Burrard Street to Jericho. This new proposal offers an amenity room on the top floor of the building for the use of the building residents only. Not only is this proposal taking away from our community amenities, it is offering only 13 spaces for moderate-income residents, all in the basement area of the building, some with windowless bedrooms. Where is a community in such a design where you place the lower-income people in the basement and house the wealthier above with all the light and views? It is just not sustainable. We recognise the need for increased density in our city and in our neighbourhood. But this design must be a design which adds a healthy community to an existing, thriving one. It must not ignore the relationship with the surrounding buildings which work because of integration and communication. Consider our plan, which suggests a building which will relate in height to its neighbours and offer homes to moderate-income families while maintaining amenities that include and connect to the community, a daycare or preschool, a meeting space, a gathering space for seniors, a place where all people in the neighbourhood can feel part of the community. Where I live, on the laneside of Trafalgar Street, I was witness to the constant activities the church offered, children and parents walking to and from preschool.
Just 15 seconds.
The sound of... Okay, a reminder of how this developer views the community is the yellow fence pallocked around it. Council members, please consider our community when you vote. Please don't look at us as monopoly pieces to be moved around your board at your will. Engage us and consider the value we have historically offered and can continue to offer our city. The spirit of a city needs nourishment, and that nourishment comes through respect for the community members who live here and love this city.
Thank you very much. Councillor Frye, up to five minutes. Do you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, Ms Osborne. So, community, this is sort of what you've evoked in your presentation there, and you spoke a lot about community and the loss of community with the loss of this church, basically, yeah?
The space that the church provided, yeah.
So why did the church sell the space in the first place and sort of give up on their community?
I think the church sold it because their immediate religious community, there weren't enough people to support that part of it. The rest of it was thriving. So it was just the people who belonged to the Anglican Church at that time. There weren't enough of those people in the community to support the, I would say, religious side of it. The rest of it was thriving.
But not enough thriving, obviously, to financially support it, I'm assuming?
To financially support the church itself, the Anglican Church. I asked that question. But the church did have an opportunity to partner with the BC government to create supportive housing. And I know that our local MLA was very disappointed to hear that they did not approach the BC government to do that, to ask for help to create supportive housing in that location.
And that is unfortunate, but that's the decision, really, that the church made.
Yeah.
As soon as they made the decision to sell, that could have been...
They could have made a better choice.
Strat condos at four stories, it could have been duplexes, or it could have been this project. And that's, I appreciate that that is a loss to the community, and I think that, you know, we'll be thoughtful as opportunities to help support the community come forward. But I'm not sure, are you suggesting that this particular development is incongruous with the community, or is it just the loss of that community space?
I'm suggesting that this particular development, the way it's designed, without any consideration of the loss of the historical amenities that we, the community, had used of, is not a good fit for this site. I suggest, and has been suggested by others, that a different type of development, which could include community amenities in it, would be a better fit for our neighbourhood and for the community of Kitsellano, North Fourth in particular.
So in theory, then, if in order to finance that kind of community amenity space, if you would accept, like, more density that supported a bigger community footprint?
I would not, I would, no, that's not what I said.
No, no, I'm just asking, I'm just thinking of the land economics. How do you pay for...
Well, I'm not, I'm not an economist, and I am not there at, you know, was not...
Well, I'm not an economist, and I am not there at, you know, was not there at the seat, but I think, as a previous speaker has said, there are ways to work within government to create the kinds of moderate and low-income housing that the city needs, without having very, very dense developments with the moderate-income houses or housing in the basement, in the dark, which is what this development is providing.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Counselor Weeb?
Yeah, on the cultural space, I know moving forward, we might look at trying to register or keep cultural space, so any new building would have to replace one for one, and that's been an idea. Is that something you'd hope to see as we try to preserve arts and cultural space, that if there are spaces like this, that the new building would replace the cultural side of it, one for one, and then could put housing above it?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Obviously, we don't have a policy like that at this time, but we're starting to hear from the public how important arts and culture is to Vancouver, and we've just moved with the new culture plan, so it is something this new council is looking forward, but I was just wondering if that's something that would be reflective in the community?
Absolutely. I mean, if we were able to bring back some of what we had there, I also really would hope that a building like this would house something for children as well, a preschool or a daycare, but for cultural, absolutely.
And then, do you think it's... This building will be embraced after by the community, to be part of the community, so that if it does get approved, that the residents of this building will be felt welcomed by the community?
That's a pretty hard question to answer without having those people there, but when you think of how a building is already being segregated with the haves and the have-nots, you think about the community that that building is projecting to the neighborhood.
Sorry, how's it being segregated?
The below-market rent or the moderate-income rentals are... They're all together on the lower floor, on the basement floors, and the above-market rentals or the market rentals are above them, and I call that a type of segregation.
Okay. Thanks very much. You have questions from Counselor Bligh?
Hi, yeah, thanks for coming and sharing your view. So, following up on that question from Counselor Weeb, if the different, the below-market and the market were mixed in the development, would that, like, would that satisfy you?
Well, I'll tell you something, counselor. I lived in a housing co-op for five years, raised my daughter there for five years, and I was paying the full market in that housing co-op, and I was in a lower suite facing a lane, and the woman who was living above me had a view, and she was paying below-market. And the integration in that whole housing co-op, which is in Kitsellano, was, it worked.
Right, so you would be...
Because there was no separation. No one knew nor no one cared. It was the community that mattered.
So, you would be more amenable to this development if the different levels of suites and however you want to say it, below-market, were mixed together, so that I may, if I were to rent on a lower level and pay market, and someone above me paid below-market, and I was okay with that, that that would be the kind of building it... And I am not making any commitments, but that could be a question we ask the builder after.
Related to the moderate income being in the basement where this, for this development, relating to that aspect of my concern, yes, I think that that would be far better than the way it is laid out now.
Okay, that's good, because, I mean, I also heard that there was... The sense of community was something that is very important, and we understand that the church brought that, but in order for the developer to purchase the land, somebody had to sell it to them, and the church sold them the land.
Yes.
It's sad and a reality, but we also see it in other parts of the city, that churches have to consolidate in order to make it work. So, we won't go into the land economics, so I just wonder, from a community standpoint, you're speaking to it, and I can appreciate why, it's a big building right now that's empty.
Yes.
It's just a concept. It's not full of people like me or anyone else that could live there with kids and whoever. So, I just want to be really clear that your sense of community, or potentially, loss of community, what I'm hearing is really the loss of the church. It's not so much the building itself.
Yes, yes, no, it's the loss of the church, of what the church offered.
Okay.
Not just the religious aspect. I'm not speaking to it from that point of view.
No, I totally get it, the preschool and the space to gather and celebrate.
Yeah, all the community amenities are what is deeply missed from that space, and there are not enough of them in our neighborhood, in our area.
I hear you. Yeah, it's a sad loss, I'm sure, for the neighborhood, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's it for questions. Thanks for coming in this evening. We're on to speaker number seven of 65, Esther Alexander. Thanks for coming in. We'll just lower the podium for you, and up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Esther Alexander. I live two houses west of the church at 1805 Larch, on the south side of our narrower-than-usual unpaved lane. The proposal for redeveloping the site at 1805 Larch, from RT8 zoning to CD1, will produce a building that is too big, too crowded, and too tall. The attempts by the planners to show close-by comparisons to justify the proposal are confusing, to say the least. The current FSR for the site is .75, and the proposed site has an FSR of 2.53. To justify this huge increase, the planners used two examples. The first comparable used is the at-large RM4 zoning, which begins on the east side of Larch. It has an allowable FSR of 1.45. For the second comparable, the planning report points, and I quote, "several strata tidal towers built in the 60s and 70s," unquote. In fact, there are only two strata tidal towers. They are 2545 West Third, the Carriage House, and 2370 West Second, Century House. The planners have failed to mention that 1805 Larch sits on a site that is a conglomeration of three 50-by-118 lots. However, the two towers are each a conglomeration of just under seven 50-by-118 lots. The buildings are on one corner of those lots, and the balance of the site is at ground-level height with amenities such as pools, tennis courts, and gardens. And so, the density of each building is greatly reduced by the enormous size of the lot, and this also largely eliminates the problems of massing and shadowing. COV Zoning Enquires confirms that the FSR of each of these buildings is 1.9516. In other words, the FSR of these two towers, used as comparables by the planners, is actually less than what they are proposing for a substantially smaller site. The planners have failed to produce any evidence to justify the proposed FSR of 2.53. In fact, their comparables make it clear that the density of the proposed building is way out of line. Regarding the height, RM4 comparables east of Larch allow for buildings of four stories at 35.1 feet in height. The proposal for Larch is for five stories and 67.1 feet in height. How can this be? The proposed building is just one story taller than the 35.1-foot building across the street, but it is almost twice the height, that is 32 feet taller than the RM4 building directly across the street. How can one additional story be 32 feet in height? Alternatively, how many stories are we actually talking about, and why isn't it clearly stated? The answer is a combination of language and arithmetic. The city chooses to define the word "story" in a particular way that isn't commonly known. And so, if we use the word "level" instead of "story," we get a clearer picture of reality. The proposed building is seven levels, 67.1 feet in height, while the supposedly comparable RM4 buildings are four levels, 35.1 feet in height. Regarding the two strata tidal towers, they are known in the neighborhood as monuments to zoning mistakes. The proliferation of towers in Kitsellano was soundly rejected by both the city and the community, in favor of RT8 zoning, which has encouraged the retention of older buildings, which are now a substantial source of rent accommodation, of lower rent accommodation available in Vancouver, as well as stanser RM4 zoning. It is hard to understand why planners have chosen to compare the submission for 1805 Larch with a failed experiment.
Just 15 seconds.
Okay. To date, the planners have not been able to provide examples of how the proposal meets the required MRHBP criterion of fitting to the neighborhood, and so I ask that council does not approve this submission in its current form.
Right on, five minutes. Thanks very much. Counselor Hardwick has a question for you.
Hi there. You've obviously done quite a lot of research. Would it be possible that you could share... Did you create a chart, for example, of these comparisons of other heights and FSRs in the surrounding areas? Because I personally would like to know why there is misalignment between the information that we're getting in the staff report and what you've just recited.
The information that I got on the FSR for the two buildings in question was straight from the zoning inquiries desk on 10th Avenue. And the information is not easily accessible, it's archival, and so they had to do a bit of research for me, but that's... I got it straight from the city.
But if you've compiled it into a chart, your research, would you be prepared to share that with us?
If I compiled it, if I had the city's help to do that, because that's what it would take.
Well, you just recited...
I'm sorry?
You just recited the statistics there. You recited that information. All I'm asking, if you could put in an email or something and share it, would be appreciated.
Of course, absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much, and I, for one, do recall the 1970s zoning changes in Kitsellano, so you're not alone.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, and you can send anything to publichearing@vancouver.ca, and that would get to us. Publichearing@vancouver.ca. Thanks very much. Under Speaker Eight, we have Janet Bickford, followed by Greg Bridges, and then David Hovin. Number eight, Janet Bickford. Janet Bickford? Thanks very much, Greg Bridges. Thanks for coming, Mr. Bridges. Up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Thanks. I'm Greg Bridges. I'm a 30-year-plus resident of Kitsellano. I'm opposed to the development as it's presently been proposed, for a number of reasons. The first of those is nonconformity with the policy guidelines as to the location and the form of the development, its overbuilt mass and lack of character, a poor outcome relating to affordable housing goals, and traffic and problem, parking problems that have been mentioned. Let me first turn to the MRRP guidelines, which you're familiar with. It has both some description as to suitable location and forms. Again, I'm going to quote from it: "On larger sites off arterials, consider up to six stories where appropriate." This, of course, is very vague as to suitability of locations, meaning in practice, it seems that the location is wherever the planning department and developers say it's okay. This is textbook vision Vancouver discretionary spot zoning in action. This is, in fact, a small land assembly of three standard city lots. It's not a larger site by any stretch of the imagination. That leads to some of the discussion we're having about crowding and whatnot. It's not a large site. I would note, as well, in your recent amendments to the MRRP program on November 26, there was an attempt made to define what is a larger site, and it's much, much larger than this. It's five times this. As to what's inappropriate, I've got a slide here. It's really Mr. Saunders' slide again. I'm going to quote again from MRRP. It says, "Projects must consider and respect transitions to surrounding areas and homes." And it goes on, "Neighborhood context is an important consideration." Now, my dictionary defines appropriate as being especially suitable or compatible or fitting. That must refer to the neighborhood context here, neighborliness, in other words. This building is a monstrosity. It's grossly out of neighborhood scale and character, cannot be reasonably described as appropriate. I'm going to compare now your more recent set of guidelines into the SRP guidelines, which were, again, in November. They also have form and location guidelines for the low-density transition zone concept. I've got another slide here. There it is. It shows the boundaries of these low-density transition zones. This site would not be eligible. It's too far off West Fourth, which is the relevant arterial. It's 175 meters from West Fourth at the northern boundary. Even if it were included in this zone, this low-density transition zone, the form that would be permissible under the SRP guidelines would be four-story apartments up to 1.75 FSR, or four-story townhouses up to 1.45, not five or six stories at 2.53 FSR, not even close. I want to turn to the topic of incentives. In addition to the height and the density that's been offered here, $1.265 million is a massive DCL waiver subsidy offered in a time of budget pressures. CACs are also not payable, even though the community amenities are being lost, and there's a proposed density increase of 337% of the existing .75 FSR under RT8. I would note that the total amount of DCL waivers in 2018 for rentals was, when I note say 1.8, it was actually $1.6 million. So, basically, you're looking at 2/3 of the full year's DCL waivers to be applied to this one project, about $100,000 a unit, in order to get 13 so-called moderate-income units in the less desirable portions of what is, in fact, a luxury rental apartment building. To me, it's a question of priorities, or it should be. I've got another question, and it's this: what else are you getting for all this money apart from the loss of community amenities and injury to neighboring properties? And I've done a little calculation there. Of building average rents, this seems to come up, and I've done a weighted average of the non-market and market. I've got over 1,700 for a studio, over 2,000 for a one-bedroom, over 2,600 for two-bedrooms, 3,600 is the average, building average, for three-bedrooms in this unit. Compare the three-bedroom average with $1,900 for the metro. This proposal does not conform with any of your policy guidelines, neighborhood scale or character. Large developer subsidy does not achieve the affordable housing goal.
Just up to five.
I request that you send the developer back to the drawing board with this project.
Thank you very much. You do have a question from Counselor Weeb?
Yeah, why do you call it so-called affordable?
I just gave you some numbers which...
But obviously, we're looking at the 20%, and that is incomes that we rate, so we don't see in Kitsellano.
Yeah. I'm looking at the building average here, and that's what I'm referring to as so-called.
Okay, but the 20%, would you call those affordable?
Yep, 950 for a studio is affordable, yeah, for most people.
Yeah, and then, you talked about injury to neighboring properties.
You're going to hear a lot more about that from subsequent speakers, but yeah, shading, loss of privacy, traffic, loss of community amenities, et cetera, yeah.
Yeah, and then, what are the things you like about this project?
There aren't any.
So, you don't like the 24... You don't like the trees being preserved? You don't like the bench on the side?
Trees have to be preserved anyway, under the tree preservation bylaw. That's not a neighborhood amenity.
So, you don't think that that's...
No matter what's built there, those trees will have to stay.
And that's what you think happens on other properties around the city?
I know that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Bligh has a question for you.
Hi, oh, hi there, Mr. Bridges. Thanks for... That's okay. Thanks for coming in and sharing your thoughts. Just on the previous slide, the low-density transition areas.
Yeah.
I think it's important to note that that... We've just tackled this in the rental incentives report, and that was approved and is coming back to public hearing. It's not yet policy, but will run concurrently with the MRRP program, so even if... So even if this is enacted, and I have my own questions around this particular slide that I've been asking of staff, but I just want to make sure we're not confusing this project with this policy.
Separate policies, yep.
Yeah, so even if this is approved or not approved, MERP will still exist.
MERP exists apart from this, that's right.
So we're here to judge our best, our ability is to judge this project fitting the policy of MERP. So this, I just want to make sure we're clear that this is, it's interesting, but it's not relevant to this project.
To me, this represents your most recent, most recent statement of what would generally be acceptable in this neighbourhood.
Of one policy, of which there's many. Okay. Just want to make sure we're really clear about that.
Yep.
Thank you. That's all.
Thanks councillor Fry.
Yeah, actually, and on that 150, I just quickly looked it up on the Google. Have you, have you measured this?
Yep.
And what is the, what is the distance? Because I'm-
Band map. It's to the north boundary of the site, it's 175 metres.
Right, okay. So I guess I'm looking at the south boundary of that site, and it's 140, 145 metres.
Give or take, yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's it. And again, it's not totally relevant to this policy, and the MERP is a separate policy, but I do appreciate that you took the time to measure it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's it for questions.
Thank you.
Thanks. We've got speaker number 10, David Hovin, speaker number 11, Sonia Kressman, speaker number 12, Louise Mandel. Mr Hovin, thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready to go.
Thank you. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly." The 1805 Larch Street development proposal affects me and many of my neighbours directly, and affects the entire west Kitsellano neighbourhood indirectly. I oppose this proposal. My name is David Hovin. I have lived in Kitsellano for 44 years, and I have lived at my current apartment at Second and Larch, which is directly across the street to the east of this proposed development for the past 20 years. I'm sure you're all familiar with the legal definition of spot rezoning, which according to the Fordham Law Review contends that, and I quote, I know you heard this before, but, "Spot zoning is an infringement of the property rights of the many as against a privileged few. It has therefore been declared arbitrary, discriminatory, or unreasonable. It was this manifest disregard for the community benefit, community benefit which prompted one authority to denounce spot zoning as a most vicious practice. A 16-page report needing 47 pages of appendices speaks volumes regarding the lack of fit of this proposal." Now, I have, I wondered for a long time what was going on here, and this happened before your council, it was the previous council, and the events were occurring then. And I couldn't figure out, why was this project being pushed forward? So I did some research, and I have read almost 500 pages of the internal communications of city planning department regarding the only, this is 500 pages of 1805 Larch Street proposal obtained under the Freedom of Information Act, and have come to the conclusion that this development as currently presented somehow contradicts some of the 2017 and 2018, this is before your election, MERP guidelines. For example, in an email dated May 28, 2018, a zoning planner writes, and I quote, "This site is not considered on an arterial. I would assume it is off of one. There really isn't much guidance, as you know, so we'll see how it develops." This is a direct quote, I have the document, if you want to see it. Now, this is a reference made by the zoning planner, because initially, the MERP pilot programme, as I understood it, was to apply only to arterial proposals. But since then, all sorts of policy modifications have been made at the discretion of the city planning department. In another email dated July 5, 2018, a senior city planner says, and I quote, "Frankly, the form and massing change required will kill the project all on their own, and there are no plans to force retention of community programmes on this site through the MERP rezoning. The die is cast." This is 2018 July. After the almost unanimous negative outcry against this proposal at the April 2019 public hearing, planning realised that it had to contain the spot rezoning issues arising from this proposal. So it asked you recently to approve certain areas of Vancouver as transition zones for potential rezoning with after-shelf approval privileges to ostensibly speed up the rezoning process. Thus, they could obtain your approval for spot rezoning without any contention, and this would strengthen their policy for spot rezoning, as in the case of 1805 Larch, until presumably a citywide plan is finalised. In the meantime, the entire neighbourhood is thrown into an enormous upheaval. I, for one, have spent sleepless nights over the past year, doubled up my blood pressure medication, worrying about how this massive development with a 67-foot-high grey brick wall facing my living quarters at close proximity is going to encroach on my privacy and property rights. When this is rezoned to CD1, the current setback from the street goes, Larch Street, comes back to, from currently 17 feet, down to 10 feet. This brick wall is going to be breathing down my neck every day, and my entire living quarters are facing that wall, all of it. My living room, dining room. Am I up to the 5 minutes?
Yep, just five seconds left.
Five seconds left. Okay. In the same vein as your courageous vote to send the budget proposal back to City Finance to come up with a better fiscal alternative than their initial proposal, I urge you to send back this flawed proposal with the same determination and courage, and for you to ask planning to come up with a less intrusive, better fitting plan, one which would be much better for the community and the developer.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
You have councillor Hardwick, questions from councillor Hardwick.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr Hovin.
Yes.
It sounds, so you FOID city documents in connection with this application?
I'm sorry, do I?
You FOID, you did a Freedom of Information Act inquiry?
Yes, actually, a lawyer in our community did that and gave me a copy of it. Yes.
So is there a dossier that has been compiled as a result of this FOI?
Well, I didn't compile a dossier. There's 500 pages of the communications, some of the, you know, they go like, you know, regarding the various issues with this project. And, for example, one of the emails says, "Oh, you know, I'm afraid there's going to be a lot of opposition to this thing at the initial hearing," you know, and so on and so forth. This kind of discussion where they're trying to figure out what it is they're going to do. It's all in there. I can send you, it's 500 pages, though, you don't want to read it. But, I mean, but I do have these two emails, I have a few more emails that I could send you via email. You can see how this was developing, and I'm going like, what is going on here? This is not right!
Well, I would be interested if there has been a dossier compiled to have that shared, if possible.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have questions? Okay, thank you. Just before we move on to councillor Kirby Young, councillor Carr.
Yes, just a big note to the speaker, that the information has to be shared with you and all of council. It cannot be shared with one single councillor.
Oh, okay.
It has to be shared to everyone.
And how do I do that? Via your own emails?
You can send it-
Or do I do it through the city of Vancouver?
You can send it up via email at publichearing@vancouver.ca.
And what is my, and I put in the subject matter, I say, you know, whatever, 1805-
Yeah, I would just say, 1805 Larch Street application, additional information, and then the clerks will sort it out and make sure that we, it's distributed to all of us.
All right, of course.
Publichearing@vancouver.ca.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, and just to conclude, in response to councillor Carr's remarks, my intent was that this should go to all of mayor and councillor.
Okay, thanks very much. It was a very good reminder. Thank you. councillor Kirby Young.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, Mr Hovin, over here. I just wonder if you can help me understand your personal situation, because I appreciate that this has been very worrying for you.
Yes.
And you said that you lived in an apartment, right, Second and Larch? And what is the size of your building?
It's 35 feet.
35 feet. How many stories then, three?
Four.
Four.
Mm-hmm.
Four.
And this was the site of the old church. There used to be two churches, one of them on Second Avenue and one on Larch.
Okay.
They kind of combined.
Okay. And you have other four-story buildings near you also?
Yes.
Like, just across the way?
I have a four-story towards my, looking north, I have a four-story building, but it's so very far away from me. The street, Second Avenue is very, and the building is set back, I have no idea, I didn't count how many feet, I can go count it if you like.
No, I'm just trying to get some context, it's helpful to understand. And I guess my question too, because you mentioned that you've been in Kits for 44 years, which is a long time, and in this building for 20. Do you know how old the building is that you live in?
Yeah, it's about 22 years old.
Okay. And at that time, do you think, because change can be uncomfortable, do you think that other people in the neighbourhood were worried about a four-story coming in at that time? Because there probably wasn't much like it, and it was a single-family there?
Well, that's a great question you ask. I forgot it, because when we bought that place 20 years ago, we were the second owners, the first owner. Anyway, we asked, and the real estate people said, "There is no way they can rezone west of Larch, it's been a huge thing." I guarantee you, now, I can't go back and sue the real estate agents if this is approved, but it's too late, but that's what they all told me. There's no way the city just promised they would never rezone west of Larch.
I guess my question, just to be clear, was if your building was probably, a building of your size was probably new for the neighbourhood at that time, so do you think-
No, no, but it fits the neighbourhood. My building fits the neighbourhood. It goes along four stories, four stories, there's social housing here, and they are, I think, five stories or maybe six, I don't know.
Okay.
This was, you know, brutalist building that was built during the-
So you don't think there were any concerns when they started building those four stories?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question then.
Well, I guess if you go back in time, there were single-family homes in the neighbourhood, and then at some point, they started building the bigger buildings and the four stories.
No, no, no. There was the church, okay, and the second church was the same height, like, the second church is almost the same height as my building, the one that's going to be torn down now if this is approved.
Okay.
So nobody was upset that my building was built, if that's what you want to hear.
And you're in a strata?
Huh? We're on a strata, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Thanks for coming in.
That's it for questions. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. We have Sonia Kressman, speaker number 11, Louise Mandel, speaker number 12, Lorraine Mickelson, number 13. Sonia Kressman?
Hi, good evening. Thank you.
Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I'm speaking against the rezoning. I wanted to start first by acknowledging all of the work that everybody here is doing today to innovate for our city, and that is really an important goal that I respect, and I'm grateful for the time. I'm speaking on behalf of the children in my neighbourhood, and on behalf of the working families like me that were part of the community centre. My child went to the preschool between ages three and five, and we're talking about 60 spaces in childcare that aren't in my community anymore. And these were really unique in that it was an AM split PM preschool, so they could manage to fit more families in, and I could connect with other mums and share childcare in the afternoon, and make it work so that I could work. This has been an extremely important resource to me during a part of my life where I needed my community. It was an age in my child's growth where I needed inclusion. I had diversity in his learning that needed community growth and support. That was taken away after he finished this programme, and he's now successful in a public school, and I don't think he would have been if I didn't have this resource available. The friends he's made there are my friends and the children of my friends. This is a huge piece of the community that has just been taken away, and I think there are children who can have their voices heard, because they're so little and nobody wants to hear them. But it's really important. They're the ones with the most life years ahead of them that can be affected by your This place also allowed me to model what it's like to have healthy social relationships and pro-social relationships. It was a homeless shelter, the people actually slept right outside of my son's classroom, and I told him that was a good thing. I told him that we need to do this sort of thing. There was a soup kitchen that he could see, and I could say, "We need to do this." There's a voting place where I could say, "Come on, we're going to go vote, and I'm going to go into this box, you're going to wait here, and you're going to see how this is done, and how you can contribute to the community too, and when you grow up." Now, there is not an amenity like this within reach of me and the amount of time I have with my schedule of working professional needs. There's the, someone mentioned that there's Kits House that is over capacity. My son's Boy Scout meeting, which is very important continued social interaction for me, is up in 33rd Avenue. We couldn't get into any of the community centres, so I have to drive every Tuesday and add 30 more minutes onto my day. And some families that I'm connected to couldn't afford that, and I've lost them in this weekly part of my life. I think that we, the children are probably the ones that have the most to lose here. I'm not really going to speak much about the height of the building or how far it is from the curve, but there's no place for them. There's a children's play area, but my children could not go there. This is for the people in a building that are fortunate enough to live on the top floor and not be looked down on. It's not something that I feel I can go to, or my children can go to, or their friends. And it's an important piece of their community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions for you. Thank you for coming in this evening. Oh, councillor Weeb, just quick on the draw there.
So, do you think that play area on Second Avenue is important amenity that we should look at bringing back, even because the trees are still being preserved, but there was a little uniqueness, that little piece? Is that something that you're hoping to see?
Absolutely, absolutely. A place where everybody can go, not just the people that were fortunate enough to get a spot in this place, but some place where we can all get together, and a community room where we can also open ourselves up to people that need help.
Okay. Thanks for taking tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Thanks. We have speaker number 12, we're just at 10:25. Speaker number 12, Louise Mandel, 13, Lorraine Mickelson, and 14, Sharon Turner. Thanks for coming in. Up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
I'd like to acknowledge the traditional territory of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh. My name's Louise Mandel, and I'm a lawyer. I live at 2535 West Third, and my neighbour for over 25 years has been the church. A beautiful building, beautiful people, sacred communal space, a religious community that served our community. We voted there. It was a rehearsal and performance space for musicians and actors, actresses, a venue for public lectures, a meeting place for seniors and neighbourhood groups. Our lane was alive with kids, the Montessori School, the summer kids camp, and my daughter played in the lane and the church playground with the kids whose refugee families sought sanctuary there. Most of all, I loved the weddings. Well, I'm here today to oppose another kind of wedding, this unholy alliance between city need and developer greed. This consultation process is not appropriate and may not be legal. I've litigated many cases for Indigenous people about consultation. For something as deeply transformative as this building is, we need a level of accommodation and consultation which is deeper. This process is fundamentally flawed, and the legal architecture of consultation provides an appropriate lens for your consideration. So I'd like to take you through the three pieces of it. The first is process. The courts have said that public consultation is not about providing a venue for people to blow off steam. Decision-makers, and that's all of you, have not, have to come into the process without prejudging the outcome. And I know the letter has been sent to the mayor and a councillor to stand down, and this is part of the process. It's no secret where this stands. The decision-makers can't proclaim their openness. The facts of the public position speak for themselves, and I'd like to say that I know probably where this stands. I've just read the papers, and by passing a city and neighbourhood plan, spot zoning means developer privilege if the city can bump up its numbers for moderate income rentals with support- with support for this particular project. And that's not an open-minded way in which consultation is required, process-wise. The next question is public interest. And here, the public interest is said to be 13 below-market units, some with no bedroom windows, some 300 square feet. And the value that this cements is a stratified class arrangement with the lower income on the bottom, the wealthy people on the top, and the building is just too large. Now, the third issue, and I was appreciating Counselor Frye for your question about it, is that if there are private interests which are expropriated, these must be accommodated. And I know that your suggestion was that it's just too bad that the church had to go. But what the law, first of all, there is absolutely no accommodation in this project. And our community amenities have been expropriated. The loss of privacy, the upper floors from this building will be able to see right into our kitchen window. We'll be able to see whatever it is we do in our backyard. And I point out that none of the market rental units will expropriate our property. The height is in the wealth of the developers. And the way that the courts balance this is to say, "Well, if there's been an expropriation of private property, even if it's in the public interest, then there's a requirement of compensation." Now, if you don't want to move into the compensation realm, the other fulcrum is accommodation, so that the requirement is to minimize what it is which will be harmed to the private interests, and that would be considered when the appropriateness of the accommodation is expressed in terms of the expropriated interests. I want to say, I want to point out that the church was a connector. It was about relationships and enhancing community values. And this is an expropriation of benefit to the existing community to the sole benefit of the developers. Now, I know the developers and planners call this a transition zone, but there's nothing transition about it.
Just 15 seconds.
It's an intrusion into an established zoning where absolutely nothing is broken, where a very beautiful, well-functioning neighborhood, multi-dimensional. You've heard how many of us have our old houses possibly...
We're just at five minutes.
I'm sorry, are we done?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
We have Lorraine Mickelson next, number 13, 14, Sharon Turner, and then 15, James Turner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Lorraine Mickelson. I've lived in Kitsilano, in the very same block as the church site, for 24 years in a duplex with my family. I raised my children there. I've worked for over 20 years as a public health nurse in the downtown east side, so I know very well the struggles people face trying to find affordable housing. I oppose the proposed rezoning and development of the Larch Street site for the following reasons. The proposed six-story rental building is too large for the neighborhood. It would dwarf the surrounding multifamily heritage and character homes. It would loom over our Kitsilano neighborhood and also create mistrust in our elected leaders who are putting developers' profits ahead of livability, election promises, and citizen input. Allowing the rezoning of this property would open up the area to further out-of-scale market rental developments, which would negatively alter the community. Rezoning would fail to provide the big increase in affordable rentals that we all hope for. The damage the proposed development would have on our community far outweighs the benefits of the small number of affordable units in the proposed building. The size of the building, the increase in population, and the lack of community amenities create safety issues and erode our feelings of control over our homes and surroundings. By situating the affordable units on the subterranean level with some rooms lacking windows is objectionable and discriminatory. It goes against our city and our neighborhood values of inclusivity and equality. The city officials should not support this type of inequity. We are a neighborhood of renters and owners, all ages and income levels. We have active programs in block watch, earthquake preparedness, and we celebrate with block parties. We know our neighbors, and we have created a safe and friendly, supportive community in which we feel invested. I would welcome a smaller rental development in which the majority of units are affordable and which includes community space to replace some of what has been lost since the sale of the church. And in light of the Squamish development less than one mile away, I feel that this proposal is not appropriate. Thank you.
Thanks very much. There are no questions for you? Oh, there are. Counselor DeGenova and Counselor Frye.
Thanks. It's just a last-minute question because you, although we're here talking about this specific rezoning and considering this, you had said in light of the development, or sorry, the development that the Squamish Nation was moving forward with, you didn't think this was necessary. Do you know which development came first, or that we, I will ask our staff this question? I can't right now. I'm just, I'm wondering if, had you heard about the Squamish Nation development first, or had you heard about this one first?
This one.
Okay, so you heard about this one first?
Yes.
So if the Squamish Nation development wasn't, like, I'm asking because, you know, we have a housing crisis in the city. Would you, and you don't have to answer my question, but would you support this if that wasn't an option?
Not the way it's proposed, no.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Frye?
Yeah, and this is really just a quick question. You mentioned, and I've heard a few people mention, that the below-market housing would be subterranean. And I'm not seeing it on the documents that we've been supplied, that the only thing subterranean is parking. And I'm wondering, was that of, obviously, you're not the only person who's mentioned that, and was that an original design that was promoted, or?
It was in the report that I read.
Okay.
And the units, as I understand it, they are partially below ground.
Yeah, they look to be, to me, they look to be at grade. I'll certainly follow up with staff when we have that opportunity after all the speakers, but they look to me to be at grade, not subterranean, so just, but thanks for, okay.
Thank you.
That's it for questions. Thanks. We're on to Sharon Turner, James Turner, and Sophie Dikakis. Sharon Turner, thanks very much. Up to five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. My name is Sharon Turner. I live less than two blocks from the proposed site, Second and Larch. I'm strongly opposed to the development proposal before you tonight for reasons that have already been very ably articulated by my neighbors tonight here and in the letters to you from those people who can't be here tonight. Thank you for listening to the people who will feel the most immediate and long-lasting effects of your decision.
Thank you very much for coming in. We have James Turner next, followed by Sophie Dikakis, sorry for the presentation, and then Sal Robinson.
I apologize. I've come before you a little disorganized. A lot of my five-minute presentation, I find, was about affordable housing more than this specific thing, so I'll just pick a few things out from tonight.
Okay, sure. Whenever you like. Up to five minutes.
And a couple of odds and ends. I did canvass the area for four days. I walked about, contacted about 35 families. I started at Larch and Second, and I came down Second Street to Stevens, from Stevens over to First, from First back to Larch, and then I did Trafalgar Cross Street in between. And I got the door answered about 35 times. And I would, I know this is not a clinical trial or anything like that, but I would say there is no level of acceptance by the neighborhood of this project at all. I had the two most favorable responses out of 35 I had was undecided. The other 35, three were against this project. So you have not got a happy neighborhood that you're dealing with here at all. There was a question that came up about were there other tall buildings in the area? And that was answered, "Yes." And I'd say, "Yes, but all of the other tall buildings are east of Larch, and this project is west of Larch." I think, I can swear it's totally accurate, but if you started at Second and Larch and you put this building up, it's six and a half, six, whatever stories it is, and started walking through the rest of the Kits Zone, through all of the West Point Gray Zone, I think you, to find a bigger building than this, I think you have to walk to UBC before you can find another building. They've never allowed any buildings in these areas this tall. And I don't think there's any reason to start now either. I was fascinated by the model. The first time I saw it, it was at the Yacht Club at the end of Larch Street, a presentation by developers. And I walked in and looked at it, and I said, "This model looks like an argument against your project." You can see where Larch Street is. Larch Street is the, it is the boundary of the zoning area. Everything, if you look to your east as you walk down to the Yacht Club, every block, you see huge buildings taking up most of their lots, housing apartments. And every time you look left, block after block after block, you see family homes, you see townhouses, you see trees. You see a neighborhood. When you look to the east, you don't see neighborhoods. You just see big buildings. And there's nothing about this building, I mean, a first grader could look at that model. If you look just at what's west of Larch and pick out which of these does not belong, and it's the one that's not there yet that does not belong. I'm in general opposed to spot zoning. It defeats the purpose of zoning regulations. The zoning regulations have been well-researched over a five-year period, well-planned, well-thought-out, and they've worked well. If you look at the models, you can see the storm of approaching apartment buildings bearing down was stopped right at Larch. And let's keep it stopped there, please. Don't do this to my neighborhood. Don't do this to our city. Don't approve this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a question from Counselor DeGenova?
Thanks very much. I appreciate you staying to share your comments and for expediting them to the merits of the project. I'm wondering, you had talked about sort of specific areas of lower density and higher density. I'm wondering, how do you feel that we should move forward to create more affordable housing in your neighborhood, considering population growth and what we're anticipating? And that we're the third least affordable city. I mean, that's what I'm, I mean, I think we all try and figure it out around this table, but I'm wondering if you could share with me what your thoughts are? And that's very pertinent to me, to this application, because that's what I think about when I think about our staff recommendations.
Our mayor said the number-one priority should be affordable housing. I certainly agree, and I think probably everyone in the building agrees with this. It doesn't mean you can have affordable housing in every single neighborhood in the world. You can't have, you can't build affordable housing on expensive lots. What you have is here, three lots cost $4 million each. And you don't do good arithmetic and have real affordable housing on expensive land. I think a good way forward is to have more, I think it was the Green Party had recommendations for 50/50 mixed housing. Perhaps it could be done on city property. Maybe you could have a developer relationship like the First Nations have established and even make income and pay off the city debt with it.
So if 50/50, if we're talking, and by 50/50, you mean 50 market, 50% non-market and non-market, I'd take it, you'd mean shelter, social, housing income limit? So anything below market? You'd have different categories for social housing?
Well, there's a thousand details. I wouldn't work them all out.
So I'm wondering...
But I say 50% should sell at market, 50% should be affordable housing.
So if the city, if the city owned land somewhere nearby in the neighborhood, and were to propose a unit mix of that in a building of this size and density and height, would you support it? You don't have to answer my question, but I'm trying to look at the affordability in the neighborhood and where you'd put it.
You're insisting I bring a big building into my neighborhood that is not big buildings? I don't know how to answer that.
Okay, you don't have to answer. I was just looking for ways to find affordable housing in every neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. That's it for questions. On to Sophie Dikakis. Dikakis, I'm sorry, I've mispronounced your name about eight times. Sorry about that.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to, oh, to say a few things here. Okay. I'm Sophie Dikakis, and I have lived at 2555 West Third for 50 years. Our home is halfway down the lane from the proposed 1805 Larch Street rezoning application, of which I am opposed. I have owned and operated Sophie's Cosmic Cafe on Fourth and Arbutus for over 30 years. I have been on the board of the Kitsilano Chamber of Commerce, have been on the board of the Kitsilano Beautification Program, and on the board of the Vancouver Community College. I have been involved with my community from feeding the hungry through my restaurant, donations to schools, community centers, and my church, and supporting Kitsilano Showboat. Why am I telling you all this? Well, because this is my community, and we all try our best to take care of one another. There are two banners on Larch and one on Second Avenue, and they both say, "Building communities together." And that's the whole object of this exercise that I want to talk about. How are you going to build our community and keep it together? This is what we have to talk about, and we have to think about. How does this project enrich our community? Where are the amenities that the church provided? The Montessori school, the Long Wheels, voting places. Both of my children went to Beavers and Cubs and Scouts. They played in the area of the church. The developer has not provided nothing back to the community at Larch. Where is the developer's social responsibility as my responsibility is to my community? Or does he feel he doesn't need to provide one? Yes, he has provided 50 market rentals and only 13 proposed below-market rentals on the lower scale of the building, some only 320 square feet, some with windows and some with not. Great, now we have glass, class differences that have to, that can go to the top, that have, and those that do not, and go to the bottom. Great community contribution. How will this moderate-income rental work down the line? I ask you, who will figure out all this? Who will, how will the oversized impact of this building impact our community? I want to ask if any of you have walked down our street. Have you walked down my lane to see how narrow it is? If you've gone down my lane, you will have noticed that it's so narrow. If you've gone down my lane, you will have noticed that it's so narrow that the garbage trucks have a hell of a time going there, going down. They have broken my gutters, I don't know how many times, had hit our, had hit our trees. And the same goes for my neighbors up and down. Can you imagine the cars and traffic going up and down and parking nightmares? Three of you ran on Green Party platform where you promised to expand Kitsilano-style zoning that increases housing density while retaining character homes and neighborhood character. We zone Vancouver for the public good of affordable housing with a range of neighborhood-compatible affordable housing forms like townhouses, row houses, cohousing, and secondary suites. You promised to do this in the context of green policy. Stand by your promises and please reject this report and draft bylaw. We can all do better, and we can all do it together for the better of our city and all of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a question from Counselor Weeb?
Yeah, and obviously I respect all the work you've done in the community and obviously the words that you're saying today. One of the things you said is, "How are we going to keep our community together?" I recently had our 20-year anniversary at Kitsilano Community, right, at Kits High School?
Yes.
Not one of us lived in Kitsilano. The community has been lost, and few of us want to come back. The call is, how do we build a community that does work together when a lot of the community has had to leave?
Well, I think one suggestion is to help the existing house, get houses, get their permits so they can put affordable housing in their basements or in duplexes or different types of homes. I, for one, believe that we have a lot of homes in Kitsilano that do provide affordable housing. I think that would be a first step.
Yeah.
Is to give incentives to the houses that are there now so they can build affordable suites without going through all the rigamarole that the city tells us to go through.
So young professionals can come back and live in a basement suite?
Well, if they want to live in suites or in duplexes or whatever, right?
I'm just, I mean, we're trying to build a community together, and we're really trying to find a way to make it work.
Of course you are. As are we. We are now in the process of renovating our house, and we've lived in there for 50 years. And we have now just gone through the process with City Hall, it's taken us a long time, and we are putting in a couple of suites, too cold with everything done. And that's going to be, I think, about 1,100 square feet in the basement with good-sized windows, two bedrooms, with the kitchen.
Which is amazing, and we need that more housing. So I really appreciate that, and I know there's others that want, in the community that want to support that and bring more affordable housing. But that's not the project we're looking at today. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Just to remind Counselors, as we close in toward the 11 o'clock hour, we'll just stay on questions. Thanks very much, Counselor DeGenova.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. I just had a question and follow-up to Counselor Weeb's question and to some of the comments in your presentation. Thank you for coming and for making your comments. I'm wondering, you had talked about the 13 units on lower levels, or I think you said, in the lower area of the building, so on lower floors of the building.
Well, it could be the lower area or this first floor. I don't know where they are, but I know that they are not at the top.
So with basement suites, although new homes, council has taken some action and policy to consider different scenarios and situations for them, current basement suites are below, some, a lot of them are below grade and don't receive as much light. We've had these complaints here before. I'm just, you know, in the context of considering what this would give for the neighborhood and what the neighborhood already has, do you think that, I mean, I'm not against basement suites, but if we're talking about people being treated as lesser because they're on lower floors of the building, then do you think that it's the same thing then with basement suites? Just a Counselor Weeb's comment of trying to build community and make sure that everyone has equal and that no door is viewed differently just because of that.
Well, Counselor, if people can afford a basement suite, great. If they, if they can afford something better than a basement suite, great. But give them the option to rent into whatever they can afford. So who am I to tell all of you that because I have a suite which is not even a basement suite, that that's not a good thing, right?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not saying that.
Well, what are you saying to me then?
What I was asking you specifically is, when you had said that these units were on lower, lower floors of the building, so what does that mean? And some were 320 square feet and some were without windows?
Well, that's what was given to me.
Okay.
That's what I know.
So that's, those are some of the comments that I hear about basement suites sometimes. So I was just, I was just asking, and I'm sorry, I mean no disrespect, I'm asking to clarify what you're saying. Do you, and were you saying that you had a concern with where they are placed in the building right now?
Of course I have a concern where they are placed in the building, because if they can afford to be somewhere else in the building, do you think they would go in the basement suite? No, they would go somewhere else.
Okay. Thank you for coming and for sharing your comments with us.
Thank you. Probably the last question of the evening, Counselor Kirby.
Thank you. I'll be brief here. We were talking about providing different housing choices and options, and you mentioned duplexes. Were you talking, thinking of duplexes in terms of rental? Because they're usually more for sale. I just wanted to clarify.
Well, I live in a side-by-side duplex. My sister owns one half and we own the other half.
Okay. But they are typically owned and these are rentals?
Well, not all of them. Some landlords have duplexes. I know landlords that have duplexes, and they're for rent.
Okay.
Right? And I know, I have friends that have bought a duplex, and they live in one half and the other half they rent.
Right. But if you're a renter, you might not have that option to try to get into that type of housing, right? Are you, I'm just curious, because you mentioned your suite, which sounded, the work you're doing sounded lovely, and the two-bedroom, are you willing to share what you'll be renting that for?
Actually, it's not a two-bedroom.
It's not, okay.
It's a one-big bedroom.
One-big bedroom.
And that's going to go, I think we're talking at $1,700.
Okay.
With a kitchen, private bathroom, laundry facilities, and the back door goes out onto the garden.
Okay. And then have you seen the customer mix change? When you talk about housing choices in the neighborhood, have you seen any impact on your business? Has there's been housing choices changing?
Well, to tell you the truth, businesses have changed on Fourth Avenue.
Okay.
I mean, I remember when Plymouth's was on Fourth Avenue, and Whole Foods went in, and that was a great, great development because it brought people in, it brought renters upstairs, and it was a really good mix of renters and businesses. And then also what I've seen in my neighborhood is the houses across the street where there live, where there were 11 units and there were small little rooms, now they are big duplexes that go for over $2 million. And the same on the corner of Third and Larch, the Sahoras own that building, and it's been vacated, own a lot, I mean, and it's been empty for years.
Very, very expensive. I'll leave it there for time.
Before we interrupt, we're just have two minutes to 11.
Very expensive, thank you.
And just before we, thank you very much for coming in this evening.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Just a bit of information, so again, this, this meeting will resume on Tuesday, December 17th at 6:00 PM. We are on speaker number 17, Sal Robinson, with 65 speakers in total signed up. You can always send your comments to publichearing@vancouver.ca. Publichearing@vancouver.ca. At this point in the evening, though, I'll need a motion for a recess. Counselor Bly, seconded by Counselor Boyle, all in favor of a recess? Any opposed? Thank you very much. We're recessed until Tuesday, December 17th at 6:00 PM. Thanks very much.